Well, the order, Peter Morton here, Foley, Chris Olney. Sue Gilbert here, Morteny here.
Yeah.
Sarah Creighton here. Great. Uh, is Gail here? I have to admit, everybody. Somebody has their, you know, their noise, their, uh, we're doing without the audio.
We've got an extra nine tags.
Okay, um, first off, we have, um, an A and R for 10, not 10, I think, circle, um, Old Essex Road, 96. Old Essex Road, and we reviewed this last time, um, and you have the material in your packet. I'll take a motion to approve, to endorse the A and R for 96 Old Essex Road. Yeah, just take a motion first. Oh, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had brought, uh, an issue up with the plan that it should have had a judicial note on the plan that indicated that parcel that's being created is a non-
Non-buildable.
Non-buildable parcel essentially, and, uh, and that it's, it is, purpose of the plan is to combine it with the budding property, the neighbors there. So, um, I did talk to Mr. Collins, and he said that he was gonna talk to his engineers about making a little adjustment on the plan. Our regulations actually do require that there be, to that effect.
Okay. So if, um, what I would suggest is that we take a motion to endorse the plan subject to, uh, a resubmission of the plan to Mark Resnick and his, his indication that it meets the requirements of our bylaw. Mr. Collins, like, let's get a motion to, first of all.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, um, Mr. Collins, is that, uh, uh, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, can you get your, uh, plant, the plan modified to indicate the, um, change as our planner has asked?
Yeah, on Thursday, I asked, uh, for clarification on the language you wanted added. Given that this is a legal document, document that'll be registered, and the selling of that parcel to the abutters will happen in the future, my question was, should the language state parcel A is a non-buildable parcel? Or should it state parcel A is a non-buildable parcel and to be combined with the abutting land of, you know, and the abutters names? But my question was, you know, I've got a P and S to sell this property, but what if the deal falls through? The plan will say that this parcel A is to be combined with the abutters, and it seemed to me that, I, I wasn't sure if that, that's exactly what you wanted me to do at this stage, or that language is added later.
Okay, your application does say creating a parcel A to be sold to the abutter. I think if the parcel is not joined to the other parcel, then it's not subject to a, to a requirement.
Well, yeah, no, it still, it still is subject to an A and R, um, and, and that's even more of the reason to ensure, if the sale doesn't go through, it's even more of a reason for it to just state that it's not a buildable parcel, so.
All right, um, okay, so the, the note on the plan would be that the, that the small parcel, I don't have the plan in front of me, would be a not, be designated a non-buildable parcel on the plan. Okay?
Not changed.
Okay, does that work for you, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Um, uh, any other discussion questions? Um, I think we, this is a, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, um, that's a, um, a unanimous vote. I'm not sure, Gail, Gail, are you here? Oh, yeah, I see you, okay. Um, great, the next, um, order of business is, uh, MBTA zoning, um, Mark, you wanna tell us?
Okay, um, so the copy you have in front of us is the latest, uh, version of the bylaw. Um, I accepted all the changes, track changes from the last meeting, and then I created this new document with the, um, additional things you had mentioned that you wanted adjusted. So, um, the first, uh, change in this, I'm sorry, I printed this out, it's not, it didn't print in color, so, but the first track changes are on. It does still show the lines underneath and through, um, the sections are on page three, um, and you had wanted to move accessory structures to be a special permit, and so it moved to D, um, line 81, and it's down on line 3 now.
We go back, there seems to be less definitions.
Yes, well, we, we had removed definitions, uh, in the last version. So there wasn't any changes to those, so.
Well, I don't think so.
So.
Because I came across Arlington's, that's one of the three that's been approved, and they define multifamily housing, and then at the end they say excluding ADUs, which I think you might want to do for a multifamily housing definition.
That's an entirely different thing. It, accessory dwelling unit is accessory to the primary dwelling, which is a single-family residence. I don't think you would need to add it.
So you couldn't have two, two houses on a lot, and then two ADUs added to those houses, and that would not be considered multifamily?
Well, no. You would be able to, if you were in a zone that allowed you to do four units, you would be able to do two two-unit buildings.
Well, it is an interesting question, because the Housing Bond Bill does, uh, say that accessory dwelling units will be allowed by right. So the question is, if you have a-
EU.
If you have a three, uh, a, a multifamily dwelling, uh, building with three units, would accessory dwelling units be added, be allowed by right to that? Excellent.
It's an inter- interesting question. So, for the record, in case my voice is getting picked up, I'm all in on this, I'm a associate. I have to look at what the Housing Bond Bill has in it now. I had looked at the earlier version, but haven't seen the most recent. I thought it was allowed as a right in single-family districts, and so that might preclude adding it to a multifamily. The other thing that I, so I think with another fight this morning, I haven't checked on, is whether, or my assumption is that as with multifamily, each community can modify some of the standards for that, but I haven't actually checked to see if that's true yet, so that's on my list. But I think we can leave that as an open question.
Well, that wasn't really my question. My question was more, could you have a house with an ADU and a house with an ADU, and is that considered a multifamily?
You mean on the same lot, you would have two houses on the same lot, each with an ADU? I think to Mark's point, that would be, huh, those aren't, that's a good question.
I was gonna-
Because they start out as multifamily houses, they started out as two single families on a lot, each adding an ADU as opposed to, uh, conversions, say, into multifamily units. That's, that's an interesting question. I think we need to research that further. I don't think so. I think they count as a single family, each with an ADU, and not as a multifamily. For one thing, each of those will only be two, uh, they, on the same lot, they would be four, but again, they were single families to start with.
Yeah, but the definition of multifamily is two units and a single family.
Right, but if you look at the, um, and it's, the definition of multifamily is three and one for more than one unit, uh, per building with more than one building per lot, which gets you to that minimum, which is two duplexes. I think the question becomes how is ADU defined? Certainly in the state sample zoning, prior to the Housing Bond Bill, it was limited to, the sample zoning had it limited to 900 square feet. Obviously, other communities have done that differently, so if I would look to how is, how is ADUs defined versus how is multifamily defined, and if it's a single family with an ADU of 900 square feet, that would be different from two multifamily units. So it, it would come down to the definitions of how you did that.
So what, our current definitions?
Yeah.
Okay, so our definition is just a percentage of square footage.
So then that would be, so your accessory dwelling unit would be the percentage of square footage, your multifamily unit isn't limited in that respect, but it can't be limited enough, so you have a differentiation of definitions at that point.
But if, they're trying to take advantage of the multifamily zoning district.
Right.
Two single-family dwellings with accessory units, it's really two two-family dwellings, one with a smaller unit, regardless of the size, and one larger. So it's really four units, if it's in the overlay district, it's four units, regardless of the size of the unit.
Yeah, yeah, if you're talking about a new build, then that's what they're doing, and I would agree with that, Mark. It's if you're talking about adding an ADU to existing buildings, that I think the definition of your ADU tends to be that.
So, anyway, I like the, uh, the way Arlington did is an excluding ADUs, because then it solves the problem.
We can go with that.
Is there any reason to not do it that way? I mean, I, I tend to agree with Mary that it's the subsequent future.
You're concerned, just as an example, that somebody might do a conversion to a three-family or, or new three-family, and then, so three units rather than one building, and then each of those units adds an ADU, so now that you're up to six unit. If that is a concern, what you've suggested, Mary, clarifies that you want just the multifamily.
I think the, the more likely is three, a, a three-family multi, three-unit multifamily. One of which is 5,000 square feet, because it's the primary house, and the other two are very subordinate to that. But then in the future, I want to convert that 5,000 square foot unit into two, using the ADU provisions.
I think you could do it one of two ways. You could do it the way Mary suggested, where you just say multifamily does not allow ADUs, or in the definition, that almost creates a standard within the definition, which I tried to avoid, and my, the other option would be to leave the definition the way it is, but to put in either the accessory uses that section under, you know, permitted uses, that accessory dwelling units are not allowed, um, as part of multifamily use. That might be a little bit, um, uh, no, not, not dissing Arlington, but that just might be a little bit cleaner way of doing it, and has it right there with the uses, so there's no question about it.
I could go with either.
What's the board's feeling about that topic? For starters, is shutting the door on future ADUs attached to a multifamily, a CHOD development, something we want to prohibit, uh, foresee and shut down?
Well, it's a little speculative, because we're talking about a potential state law which is only under consideration.
Passed the House.
Passed the House, but it's got a ways to go. Um, and I don't know, none of us know what it actually says. It may say that accessory dwelling units are allowed only for single-family homes, in which case where, I guess it doesn't hurt, overkill doesn't, doesn't hurt, but it's.
Is there a reason not to prohibit it?
I don't know, I haven't thought about it.
Sarah, was it, is it, there's a reason, usually your question was, is there a reason to not permit it?
Prohibit.
Hibit.
There are reasons not to prohibit.
Double negative.
Not prohibit.
I think the reason is, we haven't had any time to think about it.
Think about it, right, okay.
We just got it from us.
Yeah.
And we have worked on the definitions, and, um, already are, the state's multifamily definition is different from our current zonings. We're already dealing with that. Um, I personally, I would like time to think about the issue.
Okay.
I, I, I think we should go ahead with what we have.
Okay. It, it certainly can, we can remain an open question, I think, for a moment.
Yes.
Okay.
So do you want to vote on it, or are you just gonna?
I think the suggestion from our task force members is that we keep it as an open question for a moment and circle back to it. I think we'll have a little bit more.
Well, these are regu-, I mean, this is just a graph that's going through pre-application, too. So it's not like it's the final, but it's thinking, something to keep in mind when it comes back. And you might have had the Senate's vote all the time it comes back, which will help me clarify myself.
And what happens if, when it does come back, and we decide to add it then?
Yeah, then we have to go back and forth. I sort of feel like it's, might be better to add it as a more restrictive. Prohibiting the ADUs is more restrictive. You can always remove it, but then we would get a, a determination from the HLC and, um, municipal law, whether it's too restrictive. I'm so good, I-
You could make, if, if you don't want to kind of take away the text now, we could make a list of open questions that the planning board has for HLC, and say, here's our job notes, but here are some breaking things that we'd like to consider, as part of our pre-application.
That seems like a good idea. And my guess is there are a few others. Does that seem like a reasonable approach? Clarification from them, too, about how that would be applied.
I'm sure you're not the only community who's been trying to scale.
Well, Arlington raised it, okay. Um, I see a couple of other typos, so, um, let's not talk, if we have more typos, we should all read this again. For typos, there are a couple that I just saw, um, that we flagged before. Mark, you want to keep going through any substantive changes that?
The next, uh, change that you asked to have done is the, uh, add to the, uh, dimensional standard chart, to, um, first off, fix the minimum lot size for the Peach and CC districts to 6,500, which is what's shown in the model. To add a line for the base lot size, which is for the first unit, and then, um, the additional lot area per dwelling unit stays the same. And, um, add some height maximums, lot coverage maximums, and I changed, um, I've been talking with Emily, lot coverage by structures and parking to large structures in impervious surface, as Emily said. Didn't change the results. So, uh, nice changes from, uh-
I have a question about that.
Just a, for clarification, where you say by structures and impervious, I think it's impervious surface.
Yeah, our current bylaw says impervious surface, so if you have a big patio, that's considered impervious surface or opaque driveway.
I think the point is, the word surface is missing.
Put the word surface in there. It just says impervious, which is.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Question.
Yeah. Impervious surface. Okay, then the next change was on off-street parking. Where I moved structure parking, wanted that moved to the previous, into the previous section, so it's in unit number seven. And, um, in the last sentence, you wanted a, uh, 35 feet and three stories above the ground level. Uh, 130, 130 is where structured parking was moved to, and that last sentence is 130.
So, my recollection, and wrong, is that we had said we wanted the parking structures to be less than the building height?
Um, I have 35 feet.
So, okay, for new floor.
You said 35 feet.
We only allowed him the sub- districts.
So above ground, so we're saying it could do-
If you want to excavate one underground, but, uh, what people see is, will be the same, 35 feet and three stories above, right? And, um, on the next, top of the next page, review requirements, I changed the permitting authority to the planning board. That was the only change on that page.
I meant to raise this last time, the design review committee, we have, um, no member shall serve more than five consecutive terms, and they're one-year term. If we have somebody who really understands the, this seems like an area where, somebody with expertise who's done a great job, might serve more than five years. Yeah, shaking her head no, but.
No, I'm shaking my head yes. The, the more you restrict, who can be a member and who has to be ejected.
Right, right. If we have somebody who's, you know, has reviewed a lot of these things, and has the institutional memory, and has the, I see no reason to, and given that they have to be pointed every year, we don't, if they're not, if they're, the, the annual appointment sort of solves the problem of, uh-
No, it doesn't solve the problem, I can assure you.
Well, no, it helps, of people who are maybe, um, not doing their job.
People who are non-contributing.
Right.
It solves the problem.
Right.
I don't think there is a problem with people who are contributing, and that's what-
Right, so, that's my point, so, I just-
So, and this would get posted, because I think that was the problem that the select board discussed at some point, that some people were just re-upping-
Rolling over, right, they have to be reappointed.
And it was never posted.
So I'd just like to suggest that we strike the, the B, design review, member shall be reappointed, but no, uh, member should be reappointed, period. No member shall serve more than five consecutive terms, strike that, because their reappointment is. Yeah, is anybody, uh, any injections to that?
No.
No, but do we have to list that we post?
I think appointment, not, I don't think we approve. Okay, thank you, sorry to add another wrinkle.
The next page. The first, uh, line 200, we, uh, just clarifying what you wanted submitted, site plans, building elevations, floor plans, and three-dimensional views of the site. And then, um, the other edit that we talked about was adding for CHOD to line 226. That is all on this page.
What about parking?
Yeah, that's, here on the next page. Parking would be, um, when we get to lot page, it starts with 246.
Oh, I haven't.
I think you're talking about 237.
231, around 234.
231.
234.
No, 231 is project, that's in project phasing.
Am I like-
228 starts project phasing.
So on line 237, you have, planning board may reduce the requirement parking by 20%.
Am I looking at the right one, Mark?
Am I looking at the right one?
No.
No, I don't.
Oh, um, yes, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at both versions, um, that's where the edits are easy to read, um, page 230.
I think that's what we, that's what my notes say from last time.
Here, here, yes, yes. Sorry. Page, parking, yes.
Mary, did you have a question about that?
Well, I mean, I, 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 I don't agree with it. I think that, um, you know, we started out the beginning of the meeting saying the task force was listening to the residents, and we were doing the 1.5 spots, and by the end of the meeting, we had wiped that out. Um, I discussed it with many residents, um, this past weekend, and shocked that we would do such a thing when we have a parking problem, that it's going to flow onto the street. At the very least, if you're going to reduce a proposal of parking, then you should reduce the amount of impervious surface, because a developer will just say, ooh, now I've got some extra space, I can build an accessory structure, or I can do a patio.
But it's subject to site plan review.
Well, but site plan review isn't, is not a catch-all. Um, so I think, you know, I got a little attacked when I proposed having open space requirement, and now we're saying we want to reduce off-street parking and have no open space requirement, and have no limit on impervious surface. So, I'm not really clear what we're doing with this, but it seems to be going backwards.
So, I think we do still have open, we do still have, we had, this doesn't change the impervious surface requirements, and this is subject to site plan review, and I think we did vote this last time, we kind of spent a considerable amount of time, so, on, on this. And it was a kind of a compromise for, to use site plan review, I think particularly, um, situat-, depending on the situation.
So I would, I have just one-
Yeah.
-suggestion for this, which is to say that, uh, reduce the required parking by no more than 20%.
Yes, and I was in the minority on the vote, um, but what I'm reiterating is the, the shock that residents had hearing this, and, um, that I think we're definitely moving in the wrong direction, and it, it doesn't change the impervious surface amount that we have. So you're, you're reducing off-street parking requirement, but maintaining the impervious surface percentage, so that, again, a developer could then, instead of a parking spot, now there's a patio, so it doesn't make sense that you would spill parking out onto the street to make room for a patio. It's my sense.
So, I think, um, site plan review is, is, this is with site plan review. So does anybody else want to comment on revisit that? Or should we move on?
I think, I think we, I think we discussed it, and I think if people are upset about it, they can come to public forums and tell us, so.
Yeah, we, we can always remove that in the future, but I think, um-
It's not the default.
Right.
The default is, is still what it was before. I understand that, and I think- And I hope people understand that. And I think the state, my understanding is, the state has been very clear that we shouldn't put a lot of subjective things in here, and I think saying we can waive things and reduce things on some site plans for a developer and may change it for another developer, I, I think the state might have a problem with that, but we'll find out.
Well, the other thing is that if a developer proposes senior housing under a CHOD, you're not going to require full parking for a senior property.
You can't do senior housing under a CHOD.
Of course you can, yes, it's multifamily housing, doesn't matter.
You can't require-
We can't require, but we can certainly allow it.
Okay, let's, um, I think we-
Let's move on.
We can, uh, we can always, you can always change that in the future if we hear a lot of, um, additional comments on that. Okay, Mark, back to you.
The only other few changes to, uh, is just- The only other few changes to, is on the B line, just the wording residential parking requirement. On line two thirty-five, it was a mistake of the, one of the references, it's section nine point four point five, it's on line two thirty-six. And on the next page, we wanted to add to the aesthetic standards, so I added that on line two forty-six. That is all those changes.
Can I ask a question of Emily? So. We're pushing a lot of our special permit items into site plan review. And the wording back from the state on towns that. That had that, and they said either you have to, you know, change the district or, you know, or go with the special permit. They, I'll find the wording quickly, but they said that, they had wording that, but you're keeping the substantive. Items of the special permit. Do we need to word that in our site plan, site, site plan review language? We have not said that we're keeping the substantive.
Right, so for what we've said is that these sections, the criteria for these sections apply where they're appropriate. For some of them, the ones that you're looking at here in two four-two through two four-seven, you are actually removing from site plan review because they're not appropriate topics for site plan review. Or they're being addressed elsewhere, for example, you're moving, I'm assuming, because I wasn't there for that discussion. But I'm assuming you're removing aesthetic standards because you've got your own design guidelines. The other part, portions of fiscal analysis, that's not part of site plan review. The other pieces, two A, the, C. What we're doing is saying, except for the ones that we accept, we're, we take out. We're saying, look, these criteria apply, but they're just applying through the site plan review process. So I don't think you need, I don't think you need to put the language that's in the letter. Because the letter is kind of directing you to have the substantive. I think what we're trying to do with the language of the zoning is actually point to those substantive components and incorporate them into site plan review.
Okay, so line two fifty, under other, says. The criteria for granting a special permit for each of these districts below are incorporated into the planning board's site plan review process.
So I think within the language of the zoning, that's accomplishing what they recommended within the letter.
Okay, I just, it doesn't read clearly like that to me, but as long as the state says that that's.
Hi, Tim.
Okay, the next changes that you asked to do was to remove the sentence at the top of the next page on line, starting at two seventy-nine. And also to remove number four, which is at line two eighty-eight. And to make a little change to number two of B two, which is on line three oh eight. Remove the besides visible from the public way. So. That is the additional. Changes to that page. That were done to the next page. Till we get to the landscape elements, architectural and landscape elements, as it reads now. Then.
Next change is four seventy-five, or sixty-three.
Four sixty-three.
That had to do with the lighting. Adding that maybe dark sky compliance.
What line, Emily?
Four sixty-three. Or four sixty-four.
If I may on that, usually when I, A, all in favor of dark sky compliance. B, when I do that, I usually point directly to the standard, to the International Dark Sky Association, rather than just saying dark sky. So I can give that language to my, that's appropriate, pretty well.
Great, that makes sense to me. That's good, because then as it changes.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, right.
And it gives requirements for, you know, full shield, no outdoor, no downspool, etc.
The next change is on line four seventy-five, where I added integration of nature sustainability and resiliency. The next sentence, first sentence of that, we got rid of New England species and added Eastern North American with the goal of contributing ecological diversity to preserve. Species diversity adaptability and habitat.
I assume we capitalized north.
Oh, yes. And then we added the sentence on line forty-one.
Mark, sorry, this might have been my typo, but on line forty, four seventy-eight, that preserve, I think, was supposed to be create. Create diversity adaptability and habitat.
With the goal of.
To create, contributing ecological diversity to create species diversity, adaptability and habitat, so.
On four seventy-one.
Okay, so the goal to create.
Just changing preserve to create.
Okay.
Or actually, it was provide, I'm sorry, provide. Forgot what I had written. Just change preserve to provide, and it's done.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that's all great additions, thank you.
The last sentence, trees shall be located on the site to provide passive cooling to buildings and shade pedestrians and vehicles circulation with the goal of mitigating heatite on effect and. The next change is. Is line four ninety-seven and ninety-eight. To say that biotentionaries are encouraged to be used. The word large rain events. We changed another shell to showdown, number five oh five. These are the waivers, I corrected the reference, which is on line five thirty-three, which is nine point four point nine. And got rid of the extra M C on line five thirty-five. Change was, okay, number five fifty-eight was affordable units shall be constructed on-site and payment in lieu of creating units. Or proposed off-site units are not permitted.
Lu is L.
Oh.
May I make a suggestion on that line, just grammatical, I think it's confusing about what the and is referring to. So affordable units shall be constructed on-site, semicolon, strike and, payment in lieu of creating units, da-da-da-da, are not permitted.
Okay.
Could have said the period instead?
Period, even better. Full stop. But just so Peter and Gordon, so affordable, you know, sometimes they can pay into a.
Fund.
Affordable Housing Trust instead of making them or create them at a different site.
The problem is we don't know how much they should pay.
But what's due in line?
What's the problem with having created on a different site?
It was discussed and decided we wanted them as part of the project.
Was that discussed?
We discussed it last time.
I'd never been going against it.
So does this bump back to our existing?
No, I mean, does it make our other, does it make the change in our, in our.
No, 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 but like payment in lieu, does the calculation come from our existing?
So it says it's not allowed. Payment in lieu is not allowed.
Okay. Okay, do we have the economic feasibility study yet?
We're not, oh, the affordable.
The EFA, I'm waiting for those in the contract.
So it's still coming. We may, we can put that on the list, yeah, in the future. That could be removed if they.
Yeah.
Okay, let's keep going.
And the last change, not though, this last change, line five seventy-five, we changed zoning enforcement officer to building inspector.
So actually technically the inspector of buildings.
You made that point. Okay.
Where did we land in the discussion of that, who's submitting the paperwork to the state?
What's the next, I think what we would like is a. Vote of the planning board for the MBTA zoning by law package to the select board with a recommendation that's. That it be, I think this is answering your question, that it be submitted to the, on behalf of the town, to the executive office of housing and living communities and the municipal law unit for review. Is that the right process?
I think that's not what Mary was asking about.
Oh, is that, I'm sorry.
I think Mary was asking the affordable bill to put these things on.
Oh. I'm sorry.
S H I, we had a discussion and then it just kind of dwindled last week.
We know it has to be, it has to be the town, but.
It has to be the town. But I'm not sure it goes in zoning, in this zoning.
Usually across.
There's state regulations about how it's done, so rather than, there was, there was a trend for a while of repeating all the state regulations in the zoning. But basically, that has to go on the subsidized housing list, then they have to follow the regulations to go on the subsidized housing list.
I just meant who's doing all the paperwork on the town end, because we've had some issues with that.
Right, so the question for us right now is, does anything need to go in this zoning for that, to solve that problem? Acknowledging that it is a problem.
I don't think you point to the person in the zone to do that, so.
Okay, so I think what we need to do tonight, if we can do this while Emily is still here, if there's any questions. I believe that we would let the planning board, I'm looking for a motion for the planning board to, for, Anne.
One more, if you could possibly put on the questions to take up later. I'm concerned that we're restricting commercial use of residential units to customary home occupations. Lots of people work from home.
I think that was in the Beaver Dam, we talked.
To require, in Beaver Dam, if you're going to require that they get a permit from the ZBA to work at home, I think it would be like a revolution.
Okay, can we put that on the list of, Mark, on the list of things to reconsider? I think the idea was that. Someone who was generating a lot of traffic, a lot of air. But we did talk, and put it on the list.
And we can separate out certain types of.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
Home occupations from. From the remain, from the remainder of the ones that are allowed.
Okay. So I would like to again have a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Please make a motion.
That we submit this zoning language, as we discussed this evening, to the select board for their consideration. To pass it on to the state for pre-application review.
Okay, so we're submitting it to HLC and the municipal law unit.
Correct.
And with their, ask them for theirs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or clarification, Emily, is that the process that is?
Yes.
And so the, and the question that they will answer is, is this compliant with the reg, law and regulations?
Right, they're going to identify where there may be issues.
Okay. And the vote, the motion we're voting is not to endorse it to the voters one way or the other?
Correct, you're not binding yourself to just asking for a review of the.
Right, okay. Discussion, Mary.
So Emily, we were waiting an answer back from you on variances and special permits as part of the multifamily overlay.
Mark and I talked about it, and I believe, so there are a lot of multifamily, that's a right. But if somebody can't meet the dimensional standards in the table of dimensional standards. It's my understanding that they would apply as any other as-of-right use to the ZBA. Say, hey, I can't meet the setback, I need a variance, and that part would be up to the ZBA. Because that's not a use, that is a dimensional standard, so.
So they ask for a height variance.
It would be up to the.
Number of units variance, so everything would get kicked to the ZBA.
That would be, that's my understanding, it's like any other as-of-right use that somebody is having issue. Now, the ZBA, you know, the ZBA has to find where there's hardship in order to grant that, so. Different, different towns have their place dealing with that, but, but that is, they'd have to follow the processes, not all of that.
So this becomes an as-of-right, but allow a special permit for certain things.
That, it looks like that's, that's what you all decided you asked me, that there's certain, certain uses, like the accessory structures.
Well, no, I mean a special permit for, or a variance, I'm sorry, so it could only be a variance, they couldn't go to the ZBA for a special permit on anything.
Yeah, they have to follow the zoning, so.
It would be a variance for setback or height or number of units or.
Not number of units.
Not number of, yeah, number of unit would be a variance.
It would only be dimensional standard.
Dimensional, okay.
Again, they would have to prove a hardship in requesting that, or variance.
Okay, and then that would go through the, the butter process, a video.
Yeah, it would have to follow, my understanding is it would have to follow the standard ZBA process.
Okay, any other discussion on Chris's motion? Okay, I'll take a roll call, oh, Chris. Sue.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Yes.
Peter, Mary?
No.
And the chair votes yes, great, six to one, Gail. Thank you, and can we make sure we get on the Monday's meeting, Anne? A lot, okay, let's not bring in cell signaling, thank you Emily for your. Thank you Mark for all your hard work on this, very well played, so. I think we should send it with line numbers, I think it's like, like. Great, sorry to keep you folks waiting. You absolutely may, please do, and. Whatever you already sign on. Sam. All right, I'm gonna give you sharing. All right, I'm going to give you sharing. Do I have to read the? Do I have to read the? At this point, I'm going to, we'll open the continued public hearing while we're setting up chairs for cell signaling, the application of Old Cory LLC for special permit, site plan review. Site special permit and site plan review, continued from last meeting. A motion, a motion to open the, the continued public hearings.
So.
Second? Laura? Gordon Brewster?
Yes.
Laura, Penny? Oh, yes.
Yes, yes.
Sue, so, yes. Chris Olney?
Yes.
Mary Foley?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so the public hearing has been, continued public hearing has been open, welcome, and thank you for your patience. Sorry we ran late there. And thank you for sidewalk today. Let me walk in the quarry. Great, tonight I think we're talking, Mark, I'll turn it over to you or to your team.
Sure, you're going to hear very little from me, because I'm in the presence of Sam Gregorio.
All right.
Oh, he's behind me. Who is the senior civil engineer from TEC, who's our traffic guru. And Sam is going to walk you through a slide deck, which is responsive to our application, comments that came from Weston Sampson during peer review, and more importantly, designed to establish that the project will satisfy the performance standards that were in the zoning law.
You should be able to share. Well, he's getting set up. This is a public hearing, so we will hear from the cell signaling applicant, then we'll hear from our peer review, Weston Sampson, and then we'll take questions from the board, and there, there will be an opportunity for public comment. All right, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Once again, my name is Sam Gregorio, senior traffic engineer at TEC, office out of Lawrence, Mass. We've been working with the team here at CST since the inception of the project, covering the traffic and transportation aspects. So again, as was part of before, there's a slide deck about, oh, about four or so slides, that just go through the big points in terms of the traffic and transportation for the site. And obviously I'll be here for questions after that, after that. So the town received a copy of the traffic study for the project back in early May, since by peer review. And as I walk through the items of the traffic report, this kind of goes through just the agenda items that I really just want to cover for that. We're going through our coordination with Mast dot. Mast dot's a big player in this particular project as well. We have brought through 128, and the ramps for 128 off Smith Street. So some of the intersections that we are looking at as part of the study are under their jurisdiction, in addition to those locations that are part of the town's jurisdiction that we also worked at. Going through, the almost any intersections. Going through the existing conditions and then from that, the future conditions of traffic operations, and particularly what our site itself will do to it. So that's the, how much traffic is our site generating and where is that traffic going to come from? And then really going through the overall mitigation package from our site for the traffic. That's both the off-site traffic mitigation, things that are directly affiliated to the roadways, and transportation demand management. So those different items that we can do on site that kind of lower the amount of vehicle traffic that we would actually be expecting to and from the site. And then finally going through some of the open comments in the Weston Sampson peer review. So Weston Sampson did submit a second letter last Thursday afternoon. Generally, obviously the overwhelming majority of the traffic related comments have no further action. It's really a couple of them that are still open. And even then, we kind of have the answer already or we have a defined response. It's just a matter of that might be open still to more discussion. So this project has been going through coordination with Mast dot for now a little over a year. Most of that through their Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act process, MIPA, where Mast dot being state agency action on this project. Again, we have bought group 128. Have a very high, high level say in a lot of the projects, but also a lot of in-depth say at some of the individual locations that our project touches. So through that process, we've been meeting with both the private, public private development unit, which is a lot of what that MIPA coordination is with, and with District Four directly. District Four will be the owner and operator of anything that we tend to do on those particular intersections owned by Mast dot. But also, I hope you know, we had that sidewalk earlier today with the board, but we, there was a further sidewalk a little over, about a year ago with MIPA, which some of the members of the town also did tag. That sidewalk was discussion on some of the traffic items as we did walk around the site. And then in late July last year, we were issued a certificate from MIPA attaching comments from Mast dot, which their comments through that certificate were basically in concurrence of what we are showing in our traffic study. Obviously, there'll be more coordination with Mast dot going forward as we do anything that involves their right-of-way for off-site mitigation. Also, as part of the project, just the project being there, we will have a permit to access state highway for the actual traffic that will go in to Mast dot, both with phase one and phase two of this development. Phase one will be kind of the traffic study again, and in concurrence that there's no necessary work happening on state highway during that time. And then more so during phase two, when we'll talk about what that means when we get to the phase two mitigation items. So what we did look at in terms of study area, it's really based off of the Mast dot traffic study guidelines of what intersection to either see 100 or more new trips in the worst hour of the day, or a 5% increase in that traffic, whatever one is lower. So some might only have, say, five cars went through, but if that's 5%, we look at that location. So from there, that includes six locations. Two of them are kind of a mix of one location. That's the Northbound ramps and Mill Street. It is directly two intersections. But beyond that point, we get, and we'll show that in a little later slide, what that means in terms of the traffic. That's really our bounds of what the 5% or 100 trips per hour at any individual location means. Three of those locations again are under Mast dot jurisdiction. Those are the ones in the orange. You'll see orange throughout the presentation. That kind of defines the Mast dot, but obviously still being in the town of Manchester, we still want to highlight that for you as a board. So the existing conditions, obviously we did traffic count at each of these locations. They were done in January of last year. Those counts were adjusted for season. So it's based off of what to get to the average month. January is obviously lower than average. You can kind of assume that based where we are in Manchester. So all the developments are upwardly increased to meet what would be the average month condition. That comes into play there when we talk about things like orange for signals and other types of items. School Street itself, just over 6,000 trips per day right now. So that's just how it is, just what you see today. With the speed on the roadway, that 85 percentile speed, that's the general design speed operating speed that we consider the roadway to be at. 40 miles an hour northbound, 37 miles an hour southbound. Again, these speeds come into play a little later when we start talking about warrants for other mitigation items. In terms of crash history, the safety we see, our individual locations have pretty good, are pretty good on the site distance, but one of the things that we might normally be talking about in these meetings where we are, crash history for these locations, there's not much crash history to speak of. They are located, there's nothing that's designated as a high crash location. All the individual intersections that we looked at have two or less reported crashes per year. And I will say the word reported in there, because you have to have a crash report actually go to DMV for us to actually consider it a crash in that case. So there might be a couple fender benders that happen with less than $1,000 kind of things that don't end up in that list. So I try to always preface that. I always get the conversation of, hey, I saw a crash last week, and that might not be on the list yet. But overall, the location that we would generally consider, nothing is theoretically considered safe, but in the general scheme of things, safer than what we would typically see on roadways here in Massachusetts. Everything was projected out to a future condition. We project out to 2033, so that's 10 years from when the study was originally documented with MIPA, but it's nine years now. So we want to show what that future condition will be in addition to what our traffic will be on the roadway. So we do show growth rate. It would generally be about a half percent for this area, this other roadway in Manchester. We've actually shown it at 1%. So we're showing something that's more conservative to give you a better aspect of what impacts could be. In addition to that, we've included the traffic for other developments, the 40B across the way. Whether or not it happened or not, it's still included in the traffic study, let's just say that. And also a cornerstone church happened to have in their particular traffic study as well, added to the roadway. So that's just another layer of extra volumes we're adding to the roadway to make sure we're accounting for everything that's at least been permitted at the time the traffic study was conceptualized. As we go forward, new, further any permitting with Mast dot, other developments might be coming through. Those things will get added at that time. So even then, we'll be projecting out what future other further effects could be as we go through the year of permitting. But also to get into account of other products that have also happened in the area. Astroti just came in and painted, obviously, bike lanes across the bridge, built a lot of the new ramps, the town itself, did a lot of the rampant sidewalk work down in the Kid Pleasant area on School Street, as well as the continuation of some of that bike lane going further down towards the town. So that comes into play when we talk about some of the other mitigation of our items that are not necessarily vehicle related, now we can become connected to the rest of the town. So what are our impacts? So through all the other meetings, I know everybody knows this is a two-phase project. We have phase one and phase two. For the purposes of this, it's about 50/50 in terms of the square footage for each of the different phases. It's not exact, but for this purpose, it's kind of that close aspect. So I do split this up into each individual phase of what the traffic study shows, what the amount of trips would be that we would be adding to the roadway network. Not any individual roadway, but the network as a whole. This data does come from, and I'm sure you see this in every traffic study, from the IT trip generation manual. It's that collection of a couple thousand data points for different traffic counts happening. The most current version of this, 2021 data, so it's non-COVID related, so it's not artificially lowered by COVID. We'll have, the next edition's already been updated. It's already been asked for, I get emails every week about providing data for that if we wanted to. I say that because the new data, once it comes out, it's probably going to show a facility like this, an R&amp;D facility, a lot less traffic. Because the older editions, it does include some remote work. Before 2021, how much were we doing of remote work? Whereas now, there's a lot more of that. It might not be every day a week, it might just be one day a week. That might, someone might be working from home. But that starts taking a lot of cars off the road when that happens. So that's something that's not accounted for yet, even in our numbers. So we can actually almost think that in the future, these numbers will probably be when that starts coming into play. But I go 2,800 cars over the typical day. So that's in and out, so basically 1,400 total cars, but they come in and then they leave. In the AM, just about 260 for the full build-out, and 250 for the full delegate, build-out at the PM. And again, that's roadway network-wide. It's not any individual road. With the exception of maybe that water, because we have to call and come down a hill water.
That just, that's that peak hour?
Whenever those are the peak hours, those are an R&amp;D facility. Think of it almost basically like an office. A lot of trips in the AM peak hour, a lot of trips in the PM. The rest of the day, it's kind of muddled out, because everybody's already at work. The rest of the day is your, some people will go to lunch, some people come back, your deliveries. There'll be some people coming late. We do, there will be generally flexible hours. Not everybody's going to start at 8:00. But that, the rest of the day is kind of a mix between that. And I will say that the numbers here are based on the square footage. So for Mast dot purposes, once at their permit process, they require us to use the square footage number, where we actually know our employee count. If you use the employee number, these numbers are a lot less, or the traffic study does go over what those employee numbers are. So for that daily number of 2,800 drops dramatically below 2,000, if I just use it by employee. But again, for Mast dot purposes, they want to know what the full day is under a square footage sets. And we do that because each R&amp;D facility is a little bit different. The square footage might be different for those facilities. If you know the number of employees, that really is controlling the amount of trips you're, how many people are coming to work, maybe who are leaving. So that's really the size of that. Sorry, you had a question?
Yeah, mine's a simple question. These are, what we're looking at right now is, you're projecting the count, correct? Projective of all those factors, this is the projected count.
Yeah, and what I've said before is, this is also a conservative number, not because, not just because we're using the square footage count as opposed to employees, but also not taking into account things like remote work yet, which are really increasing, mostly. Not including, we've assumed all of this is vehicular traffic. We don't have any credit for people who might bike, no credit for people who might walk, no credit for people who might take transit, although transit's a little different because the train station's not exactly close, so you're probably going to end up finding another way to be in a real vehicle, getting here from the train station, even if it is by bike or something else. Now, from there, that's distributed across roadway network. Using the US, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Two quick questions. Could you define what peak hour range is? And if this includes service trucks, deliveries, et cetera?
Of course, so this is the general vehicle traffic. So it's anything that would, because it's based, the manual itself is based on traffic counts, it does not necessarily decipher, at least in this number, whose truck, whose, how many are UPS trucks? But there will be UPS trucks. How many are just regular vehicles? But there will be regular vehicles. You can actually break it out by truck. It's obviously a percentage of that number. But R&amp;D facility, we're talking, it's mostly passenger vehicles. But it's inclusive of everything. It's not necessarily calling out who's who as they enter the site. It's the two counts on the roadway. But usually driveway specific, so you can get a good idea of exactly what that square footage or what that employee count will actually do. There was a second question there.
Just what the parameters of peak hours are?
Sure. The parameters of peak hour in this sense, there's no set hour of the day. It's going to obviously change based on individual location. But the way the manual works is via what would generally be considered the adjacent peak hour traffic of the adjacent roadway. So for here, you're doing, it's assuming that you're in the worst hour of the day of your traffic on the roadway adjacent, which for an R&amp;D facility, kind of lines up with the roadway that you would be around through, it's general commuter traffic. People who want to work in the morning, people who are leaving the afternoon. So we're talking about that 7:30 or 7 to 9 range, but we're talking about one hour within that. And then 4 to 6 PM, but one hour within that. So it's not 4, it's, it's, it's 4:30 to 5:30 or 4:45 to 5:30.
And is this, I'm sorry, is this the site trip from cell signaling's project?
Yes.
So this is the additional trips?
This is the additional trips. For again, the whole roadway network, For again, the whole roadway network, and we're going to talk about that part in the next slide.
Plus these other projects you're talking around, right?
Uh, this is just cell signaling.
Or the forty B, oh, this is included?
So the forty B is its own number.
Okay.
It's included in our study.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's separate from this particular number.
Thank you.
So your, your study will show what the current traffic count is this hour too, without your project? Is that included here?
Yes, we show with and without it.
Okay.
And that's the comparison. We'll get, and those will be in a couple slides as well.
Just, can I?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, so you, on the prior slide, had the additional increases in road. So those are all additions to the current status quo.
Yes, so when we're.
The status quo includes transit from Essex to the high school in the morning and the daily traffic in and out of the MAC. That's considered to be your baseline already?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we take our trips and we distribute across the roadway network through all the different ways of signal intersections that we've talked about, part of the study area. That's based upon US Census Bureau's Journey to Work for the most recent year available, or at least the time of the study. I think they've updated it by a year or so now since the study started, but two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen. So some people get the mailer in the mail every year. It tells you, asks you a bunch of questions and you answer them. And we need to project out for each individual town, how many response we have about where people work historically, what are the trends for that town. So I, from Manchester, we can pretty much get information from, if you live here or you work here, vice versa, where you're traveling from to go to work or to live. So from here, we chose the top twenty-five towns for residents, oh, sorry, for workers in Manchester where they typically live. Comes out to what be about, I believe it was seventy percent of the overall, represents thirty percent of the overall workforce. The other thirty percent are all individually towns that are less than a half a percent or so. So they're not going to change the number that much at that point. And that's just because we can't do five hundred. Some of them are in Texas realistically, because some people telegraphing themselves. But what that does is we're able to project the traffic over the individual roadways. So for the peak hours, we have phase one and the next slide will be phase two. This is the actual traffic that we would be adding to individual roadways from our site. So on phase one, we have the benefit of being right next to one twenty-eight. The overwhelming majority of the traffic on the site is obviously just going to use one twenty-eight. It's right there. So where, how we project that out, well, with that journey to work data, we know where people live, they're going to obviously work here. How do they get here? Waze is going to tell me. So that's how, sort of how we're projecting it out. Waze or Google Earth or something other program that tells me exactly where to go and what's the quickest travel time to get there. So that's how we're projecting out the roadway, because most likely, even if you're not using this every day to go to work, it's probably on your car, even if it's just to find out where the cops are hiding behind the trees. Not saying that that's what I do. But under phase one, each individual roadway, especially when you're talking about the in the town part, the center of town, which is to the south here, individual roads like Pleasant and Lincoln, or just going directly into the town right next to Town Hall, right here, this intersection outside. We're talking about, under phase one, the largest volume in any one direction, I believe over there is nine cars in the worst hour of the day. For that perspective, that's one car every six minutes on average. So inside the actual town, it's not really that noticeable. And a lot of that has to do with, once you get into Manchester Center, unless you're the small amount of people in Manchester, if there's not a big population, it would be happening to work at CSD. Most people are working, living in other places as they come to work here.
So I'm sorry.
Maybe on one twenty-eight between us and the actual center of town.
This is the additional?
Additional traffic that you would see on the roadway based on what's there today. So phase one, there'll be a phase two slide, the volumes are actually going to get a little larger, not too much larger, but. And as you can see, the numbers for Route twenty-eight, it doesn't really point to that, that's fine. One twenty is obviously where you see the majority of that traffic. So phase one, fifty cars in, ten cars out from the Boston side, sixty cars. Towards Gloucester, thirty, in the AM, just under thirty in the PM. So that is the majority of your traffic volume is on one twenty-eight.
Can I be very basic about this?
Sure.
Would you mind actually going up to that screen and describing what?
Oh, of course. I was going to use this, but this thing doesn't really.
Doesn't work, yeah, maybe it's worked better.
Don't touch the screen though.
Technology.
Yeah, don't touch the screen.
Don't touch it.
Is it going to skip slides?
Welcome. If you can't see, to grab a chair and bring it around. Yes, don't touch the screen. Don't touch it.
Pleasant Street, Lincoln, and then down to the intersection, obviously right outside the building right here, that's kind of what we're talking about here on School Street. So for these locations, AM and PM under phase one, the, again, the largest volume, never seen on any one direction for any one roadway, nine new vehicles in that worst hour of the day, AM, eight or so in the PM. Sorry, I got too close. With the majority of that traffic being on one twenty-eight.
So this is nine more vehicles than we currently have?
Than we currently have. So again, about one car every six minutes.
So if you never came. One car every six minutes, that's all, then again, more.
Well, phase one, it does get a little larger phase two, so I'm not going to skip that part. I'm going to make sure.
Well, it's nine cars in an hour, is what you're saying, which is different than one car every six minutes, because they might all.
Nine times an hour.
Worst case, they might all come in the same five minutes.
Sure, they might all come once. And after the other fifty-nine minutes, there's no way.
They might come in nine minutes. There might be one of them.
It seems implausible to me. I can have one car every six minutes.
I think it's one, it's nine cars in an hour, and they might all come in nine minutes.
Nine cars in an hour, and they've got, and you've got hundreds of people coming there in the morning and then.
They're not coming to Manchester.
They're coming on one twenty-eight.
They're coming up one twenty-eight and they're getting off that exit and they're going in.
But that's fifty cars of one twenty-eight.
Yeah, can you talk about one twenty-eight?
Again, the key benefit that we have on the site is one twenty-eight is right next to us. So when you talk about where we get down here, right to this intersection, let's say out the door, other than Manchester itself, there is almost no reason why you're passing through that intersection unless you actually live right around this area.
And Michael Combs to work late.
But I think, again, if you even come from Gloucester, okay, you can come through the back road and come down to the center of town, but most of Gloucester, you can just take one twenty-eight. And that's the thing, you have a benefit of where Manchester is comparatively to everything else. It's up against the water. There's only so many roads in and they only go so many places, Gloucester and Beverley. That's basically it. Otherwise, you would have gone on one twenty-eight. And that's where we get the benefit. There are more, a little bit more going to the north towards Essex, which, again, we're in that fourteen, fifteen range for one direction. And again, phase one, phase two will obviously be a larger number. And I'll just jump to that right now. So this is the aggregate, phase one and two, so full build. Even then, center of town, the high.
Sorry, could you just point to the Pleasant and School Street intersection on those dashes there?
Pleasant, no, I'm trying to. Pleasant School, if you can see the red.
Right there, okay.
That's Pleasant School.
So an additional twelve cars.
No, fifteen, it includes both directions, but, but again, even fifteen, one on average every four minutes. So, and it's just, it's the nature of, there's not much to go to once you get that one twenty-eight in terms of an R and D facility, which is regional in nature, draws traffic. A residential, there's might be more need to come to the center of town, post office, Town Hall, more restaurant access on a daily basis for all three meals, let alone what an R and D facility, but hopefully you're considering an office complex with pay. And again, I think most of that traffic centered towards the highway, do one twenty-eight. And that's just where, again, the journey to work data kind of points us, and what Waze, Google Earth and other travel count lines kind of point us to how people would actually go there, which is the fastest way. People will tend to always find the fastest way. You look, but you ask a question as well.
Well, maybe you're going to get to this, but it seems like cell signaling has other facilities that you must know actual, and you're right beside one twenty-eight with only a, you can only get on one direction from your King's Grant location, right? So that might be, but do you, have you ever done, like, that to me would, like, how many people get on one twenty-eight at peak hour from that location? How many, how many, how many cars do you have? Do you have how many people working there and how does that compare to this?
Well, I'll take us down that. I mean, we haven't done a traffic study, I'll just say. With the admin of COVID, our onsite employee count is significantly reduced. If you go there during any day of the week, it's probably thirty to forty percent of our normal population because there are so many people that are working remotely.
Why don't you, why don't you describe what the practices are in terms of coming to work and leaving to work? It's not necessarily shift work where you're, everybody's punching in at seven. I think that might help explain.
I mean, we're a, you know, one shift, five days a week, you know, we, my staff, for instance, comes in at seven, they leave at three thirty. Most scientists are, you know, they come in anywhere between eight and nine and they leave somewhere around four to five. We've got a couple of departments that work till eight for shipping our product.
So it's staggered?
Staggered, yep.
Again, there are, the one, the only issue with doing a, we got lucky that CSD is, there are a couple of different stats down. The only difference would be for our study for that is location is still everything and depending on where, depending on location and, okay, we know the location for this one. Different ways to get in and out, different proximity to, for even the water, how much could possibly be passed in? Where there is a little bit more to, you know, Beverley and Salem, Marblehead area, point that way, because of the population wise compared to Manchester. That, and the population is not necessarily one hundred percent transferring to this location, which means a new employee force generally might have a completely different way of getting where or where they were living. So no direct, I'll, I'll just compare for that way. Where the trip count itself, how many total trips, might be something that you might be able to pull from that. See, how they get there would be completely different just because, unless the employees are the same. It's hard to project something that I'm trying to give you, the typical thing that hopefully would be the same, maybe twenty years out, and all the employees maybe have retired since then. So again, from there, we did forecast substitutions, traffic operations are both in the no build condition. So this is without us, what you're seeing in the screen now. This is what you will see out there today without us being. And each of the intersections ranked on a beta F scale. So I always try to preface this, LOSF, level of service, does not necessarily mean failing. It is a threshold of delay per vehicle. That's what it is. It's fifty seconds per vehicle on average, or a delay of any one approach. And that's for this, all unsignalized locations, it's the stop sign approach, basically. The signal, I feel, will differ just in the average of everybody. Free, uh, School Street's not going to really experience any delay anywhere except for the four-way at Pleasant. So from that, again, that fifty seconds level threshold, to give you a general idea of what fifty seconds does mean, I know it sounds remedial, but if you're three cars back in a queue, doesn't sound like a lot of queue, takes you a couple of seconds every time you're pulling up as that makes car. Once you hit the back of the queue, so you pass the stop sign, that amount of time. That takes me a minute and a half to get out of my drive, I guess, sometimes. And I'm around, I'm like, it's too much different. So F doesn't necessarily mean failing, it just means, it's just the level of delay that's at that intersection.
Is that Lincoln, is F Lincoln?
Yeah, right now, we have level of service C's up at Atwater, both AM and PM. The ramps are kind of a mix. It's D at the southbound ramps, F at the northbound ramps. Which just means you've got to get ready for the fifty seconds of delay getting out of that ramp on average from that worst hour of the day. Rest of the day, it might be completely free flow. It's just, we're talking about the worst hours could be really, that's really going to control how we look at mitigation. Especially compared to our site, which is driven by those peak hours, which were commuter business. And then level of service F in the AM and D in the PM for the Lincoln and Pleasant intersections. Pleasant intersection to Long School Street. So, no build, there's obviously some increases or some more degradation in the level of service. D to E up in Atwater, the Fs are staying friends at the northbound ramp. They do trip the threshold of fifty seconds at the southbound ramps. Pleasant and Lincoln pretty much stay the same in terms of the level of service, but the label obviously go up to add one car to the journey. Right, so, but we've already established that there's actually not getting that much new traffic toward at those locations. So in a broader sense, and this is kind of the layout of what peer viewer has in his report, is individual, what we'll call the elevated level of service locations. So Atwater during the evening hour. Level of service E, less than fifty seconds of average delay per vehicle. But what we call the VC ratio, that's the volume versus the actual weather, where we can actually handle the capacity, is still less than one. It still reserves capacity on that approach. We can still fit more cars and it's not getting fully congested at Atwater. So it's, again, it's, that's a minimum amount of delay trying to get how Atwater onto a lean line roadway because you have a stop sign.
It is.
Somebody would see this definitely.
It's more congested in the evening because most people are making the left turn out of Atwater across traffic.
Yeah, and in our sense, again, this is the no build condition, though, this is with us. For an R and D facility, our people are at that time of day. Even if, if you could talk about the MAC. And the MAC, at this time of day, it's kind of a mix between in and out, whereas in the morning, it's mostly probably people coming in where they're just, just before that. So you would expect Atwater to be much better in the AM, which it is, which is why we have it highlighted here. So the orange, again, MassDOT locations, the southbound ramps, trip the fifty-second threshold for S, a little about sixty seconds of delay on average in the morning, about eighty-five on average in the PM peak hour. Again, still reserve capacity exists, we're still well below one on that capacity ratio. And discussion with Mass, I would definitely coordinate with the MassDOT to let it process. So that, MassDOT sees for a couple, or a little about an hour of a day, that being like that, that's not a concern. Especially on a ramp location, that's no different than mostly any other ramp that they have in their system for some of those stop signs. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I must be thinking of it backwards. So I'm not understanding why the northbound is more backed up than the southbound.
Uh, northbound getting off the ramp would be people coming from the Boston area as opposed to the Gloucester area. So you would always expect more traffic to be coming from that direction, hitting the stop sign, which is why the northbound ramps will have the heavier delay.
So it's coming off one twenty-eight in the morning?
Yeah.
From Beverley?
Beverley, Boston, Denver, Pevilly, yeah.
Yeah, from Pevilly. And get, and waiting at the stop sign on School Street to turn, to turn left?
To turn west.
While, while the Essex parents are coming to, to the high school.
And that's the same without us, in with us.
Okay, so I'm.
That one's always a little worse.
Picture with the ramp, not the stop sign.
Right.
So you mean stop signs here?
Yeah, well, there's a stop sign now at the end of the ramp to turn left.
You didn't know that?
No. I'm, I'm still backwards. I'll have to ponder this one.
I'll go back one. Northbound ramps, some people coming from Boston, coming up the ramp, seeing the stop sign across, what would be the cornerstone church?
Yes.
Where it's southbound.
That's the bad place.
Coming from Gloucester, you're coming up right up against the MAC.
But why would cell signaling impact that at all?
Of most of our traffic being generated for our employees, which still be coming from the west, Boston, the Danvers, Pevilly, and stuff like that.
So I have a question. I may have missed this, but.
Sure.
Are you, have you shown or will you show what all of these intersections, how they rank currently? So that you then show what the impact on top of what we are right now will be?
Sure, and that's what, kind of, this was kind of pointing out, no build, that's without us.
Okay, thank you, all right.
And then the next slide, build. So some of them don't even change.
Yeah.
The delay will goes up, but the, the ranking itself doesn't change. And obviously, there is some increase in some of them, again, not necessarily what we'll call upgraded completely, but. And then this slide was highlighting kind of those, those key areas that we want to talk about, this, I, direct items of Pleasant stands a part of the peer group as well. So in the northbound ramps, and we're going to talk more about that actually obviously later, but that's the one where we do see the elevated levels of delay. So that's the ones that we're going after, really for outside mitigation. And we already had discussions on MassDOT about that, what that mitigation would look like, again, being their location. It may have the ultimate say on what actually happens on their, a particular roadway. And then going down towards Pleasant and Lincoln. We do show level of service F, it's a condition though, that's very limited of change versus whether the no build condition. So whether you have this or not, there's obviously a small increase in the delay, but overall, it's not really changing for what's actually already happening at those locations. And being the location that they are and how they're currently situated geometrically, why, how wide they are, where the houses are, the back of what. The limited amount of mitigation that you can actually do, that would be reasonable on CSD as a mitigation item for that amount of delay they were increasing, not much. Present a position of, we're not really much changed, so it's not related in that we are providing top. Documenters provided those locations to alter the situation.
Can you sort of translate mitigation with Mass DOT at the northbound ramp? What, can you be explicit about what that means?
Oh, yeah, we're here. We'll have a whole slide on that one.
Okay.
It might be, it's partly the next two slides. So from here, we are looking to do some offsite traffic mitigation work. So at school and Atwater itself, so this is, it's not our driveway, but it's really where all of our traffic is coming out on the School Street. There will be resurfacing being done as part of the, the general site on Atwater or other utility and other things that are happening along the roadway. But with that, updating some of the markings at the end of that roadway, so that's actually to find out where the lanes are. Without roadway widening, we have wetlands. Definitely wetlands on the north side, and depending on who's going to flag that day, there's probably wetlands on the other side for a good length of Atwater as well. And updating the, the signs up there, right down the stop sign, it's pretty good. Something that we can update, make it more reflective, higher visibility from a distance. So at least, and looking at maybe even new object, unobject markers on the other side. It is a dead end theoretically at School Street. And at night, not a lot of lighting on School Street, so something to enhance that ability for that stop sign to see further. I'll skip over to School Street first before we get to the northbound ramps, but, uh, School Street. Through our MEEPA process, we discussed with MassDOT and the folks at MEEPA about extending that buffered bicycle lane that they just put over the highway and extended it up to Atwater. So that only requires minimal fox widening of the roadway, so we're talking just a couple feet maybe. To get it up to the whip to do that, that would actually take the range and actually narrow them down a little bit as well. So that's also helps the traffic common sense of a little bit of speed control. Because those lanes really only need to be eleven feet wide on that type of roadway, and right now, they are wider than that. So we can buy back some of that property that we already, that's already there pavement wise, to get those buffered bicycle lanes right now. And they start southbound at State Highway Lays, or actually at the State's property line into town. Northbound, they kind of stop, so they keep short inside the ramp. But we would take that, standing it up, obviously to that line and then further out to Atwater itself with there. But bike improvement itself, why we've kind of gone this route is being an R and D facility, the likelihood of one of our employees being in a tree, a walker, is very limited. The nearest dwelling outside the, what's on, individual property next door, there's MAC or the, the office, the small office complex in the middle, the next residential dwelling is a mile away from our facility by walking from Atwater, then down to School. And then from there, anything that someone actually might be going to walk in lines is even further than that. So the likelihood of us having walkers is very, very, very limited. Master T has even defined that roadway as a low potential problem. That's directly something on their website that they define a roadway. Whereas biking, on the other hand, a more likely of someone from our site actually being biked to the location. So being that the buffered bicycle lanes are, are being provided, were provided, uh, Master T to get themselves a proper. So, being that the front for bike lanes are being provided, were provided, Master T did themselves a proper bridge, let alone what's up with that now in the town property. It makes sense to us to have that to be a mitigation going up the road. And then obviously, the School Street at 128 northbound ramps, yellow big location. This again has gone through conversations with MassDOT. They've reviewed our process as part of the MEEPA process and have issued generally concurrent with that, it's part of the MEEPA certificate and through our other coordination. That after phase one, the individual operations at the end of the ramp are not, obviously the delay goes up, but not so much unchanged than what you see today after phase one. And so, from there, knowing that our trip generation is generally conservative, they were in agreement that you don't necessarily want to necessarily change anything here, for instance, the traffic signal now. Because you're in two phases, you provided us with the opportunity to check what happens after phase one. And at that point, if it's obviously needed, you need to provide that single, a traffic signal as part of phase two before you do. And that will be their general occurrence, that's what we're improving there. So, with that, we would provide the design for that, that would start the application process with Master T's permit. For the phase one occupancy, for the traffic signal to go in at phase two upon Master T agreeing that would happen. And the next slide kind of goes through some of the aspects that might happen with that. So, as part of that, we have to go through a warranting process. There's a warrant process already done in this particular traffic study, that information will change obviously following phase one. We'll actually have new traffic data, new traffic counts. The other, whose only roadway might lower the speed, and I say that because right now, if the speed of the roadway, which I said was 40 miles an hour. If it's less than 40, a traffic signal is not warranted at the northbound ramps by federal baggage, which means we cannot.
You cannot, why?
We cannot put it in, it's, the feds would tell us not to. It would be against the actual federal regulation for the signal at that location if the speed were to drop below 40. So, following phase one, we have to do another study for Master T anyways, and we'd be looking at this information again to recheck the warranty with them. The speed's lowering to 40 again, the volume might have changed by then anyways, and therefore now the speed may not matter actually at that point. But it's things that we have to check again, which is why at phase two, we'd be going through this process again to make sure a signal is actually warranted. Warranted doesn't necessarily mean you have to put it in, but it does mean you can't put it in if it's not warranted. So, it's the alternates of those. So, that would be part of the Master T permit process, we go for at that location.
Let me ask you a question, is that, are you talking about a full stop signal, or is that the same for a flashing red or yellow?
Red, yellow, green, typical traffic signal.
Typical traffic.
All approaches, all owned and operated after the fact by Master T. They will be the ones who run it after the fact. It's on there, it's their responsibility.
So, do you make any distinction like the other end of Pleasant Street, Pine and Pleasant, there's a flashing red in one direction and a flashing yellow on the other way?
Yeah, this would be full control, red, yellow, green, green, wherever it goes, red or red stops.
At the intersection.
Of the northbound.
Of the ramp on 128 to on School Street.
Yes, and it would wrap in Mill Street while you're at it because the proximity of Mill Street would necessitate that Mill Street gets the same signalization. Just because it's only about 150 feet. But what that does is delay. That's the phase one operation, I actually don't have the full build out of the signal. But, when I was talking about level service F before, that level service F drops down to like level service C. On the ramp at Mill Street with the signal. So, and a lot of that is, just as you would think, is if you get a green light, as opposed to a stop sign, you stop, you wait, you pull up, and you stop. You wait, green light, 15 seconds, 12 cars go. And you flush everybody out, and then you don't get green again for another minute, but it flushes everybody out quickly all at once. So, that's why the delay drops dramatically with the signal at those locations.
And when you say wrapped in Mill Street, is that a second signal at Mill Street, or how would that?
There would be a separate like overhead arm that has signal heads on it, it would all be directed connected, so.
Okay.
They're all going to be on the same type of operation. It's just a matter of, it's too close to not have it on.
Yeah.
We would never put something of that kind of mixed kind of roadway tying in without having to signalize if it's going to be that close. And Master T would make us if we didn't want it, so they'd say, no, you have to take that.
And no signal in the southbound ramp?
No, because even under a full build scenario, most of our again hard trips, especially coming off the ramps, are all right turns on the channelized line. So, most of it's just almost, it's not a free movement, it's theoretically yield, but. Up to that, least amount of traffic turns are possible. And then onto the ramp, left turn in, it's not a stop, so you're still free flow, you're just waiting for the gap to go if there's people. If there happens to be people there. So, generally, still a very beneficial level service, even for the left turn on. So, that's why at that location, Master T, with the small amount of delay that was going to happen, and even then, we're not actually even adding traffic. To the moment that actually is level service at that location, the southbound ramps, we're just adding traffic to the main line, and therefore the gaps are smaller. That's it, we actually don't even add traffic to the actual stop sign, because all our cars turn.
So, for clarity, so would cars on School Street have to stop?
Yes, but we're going to, at this kind of location, I would expect a green light is going to be on School Street 80 to 85% of the time. So, every once in a while, let's say there's about 90 seconds between, for that time for it to wrap around the entire cycle. Probably like 70 seconds of that's going to be on School Street. That won't be the exact timing, I don't know exactly what it would be yet, but that's kind of what we're looking at. So, for a small amount of period, it will turn red to School Street, some cars will stop. But even then, traffic study is showing that the operation of School Street on average is still very acceptable level service. Minimal, like 20 seconds or less.
Yeah, because we have school buses coming from Essex.
Yeah.
And if it gets backed up too much, and then backed up at the Pleasant School stop sign. Just something for us to think about.
Does, when you do, when MassDOT makes this decision, I mean, I can just, this would be the first stoplight in Mass, in Manchester. So, that's got a little bit of a sense of, and for, I'll speak to myself, it's like, hmm, you know, it's kind of a change. When the way, when the stop flashing red at Walker and Pine went in, it was, there are still people who don't honor it. So, it was a big, big deal. But, what does MassDOT, and I understand, I'm hearing you say that MassDOT kind of makes this decision. And then would they actually do actual counts as opposed to yours are based on your methodology in those standards? But would they do, actually do real traffic counts to see if there's?
Yeah, so after, after phase one, and again, this would be us, again, T's, and we'd be doing the study for MassTOD and MassTOD. We'll obviously have new traffic counts that we'll just do from actual counting cars. From there, we'll know exactly how many of those cars are our people at CST at that point, because we're after phase one. And we can basically, knowing the square footage of what we have now, we can get a pretty good estimate of what it will be for our traffic. Real, real life traffic, not just a projection for what phase two will be. And it's going to be generally the same proportional square footage of employee at that point, once we get in there. Because it's our, it's our whole facility at that point to know the numbers of, and that will be projected on the traffic count. That will be just selected just like a normal traffic count would. Master T will, again, targets or permanent progress of the MEEPA process for all that to go through. We have a strict guidelines of exactly what that study has to include in for MassTOD.
Are you, would you be counting, or are you projecting bikes and PED traffic? I'm thinking about vehicular and bicycle and PED conflict areas. And you're, you know, the traffic light on the one hand for the northbound traffic is addressing that. But anytime the vehicles are turning left, that puts a cyclist more in danger if they're crossing through that intersection. So, how do you deal with the increased, you know, left turning and the impact on?
Sure.
That's quite a, that's quite a throughway for a cyclist.
Any signal design that we do, especially something that has bike lanes in the actual physical bike facility, will include all the necessary items to include the bikes and the PEDs into the off-site settlement. So, whether it's PEDs and obviously crosswalks, pedestrian timing, something like that. Bikes, depending on the location, we're doing this even a lot more, in fact, we're doing bike specific signal heads. That have slightly different phasing maybe than the main line. So, we're different size, we're in different positions to be right there for the bike to give a C base. Here, where we have a bike lane, we know where the biker's going to be, especially because they're also not turning on the ramps.
Right.
Shouldn't be turning on the ramps.
See, that, you're talking then about dealing with the kind of, if you're coming out of town, it's sort of the left side where the northern traffic is, but you're not signaling the other side of the ramp, so.
Well, we wouldn't be signaling the ramp itself because there won't be, boom, no getting vehicular signal really.
Vehicular signal.
There wouldn't be bikes from the ramp itself because there'd be no bikes on the ramp.
I maybe I misunderstood, are you talking about, I thought you said you were only going to signalize one side of the ramp, only the northbound traffic, not the southbound traffic?
Well, the northbound ramps, so that's.
Northbound ramps, yeah.
That's the actual full intersection, that's Mill Street, the ramp itself, and School Street in both directions at that location.
And then are you talking about adding crosswalks and pedestrian beacons at all, everywhere you cross a ramp at 128?
Where the sidewalk is already provided, so right now, I believe at that location, it's just across Mill Street, is the only one that has a sidewalk, there's no sidewalk on the west side. If we were doing, if we were doing the southbound ramp, too, we'd be having all the stuff crossing each of the four, four lanes of the echo ramp, the two channelized lanes and the two main lanes.
So, it seems like if you're talking about phase two, and I realize that's down the road a bit, but at that point, you'd really have to deal with the pedestrian and bike traffic with the, you know, making safe crossings at the, getting across the ramp for PEDs and bikes.
Well, yeah, again, we'll be providing those facilities from where the facility exists currently, so, because we would have to. There would be no way we would ever even design if it didn't include the comment, the stuff that's already there. So, there's a sidewalk on these sides, we will provide full pedestrian accommodations for that sidewalk to the signal. There are bike lanes on School Street, even if we were adding them as part of the road there. We would incorporate those into the signal through not just individual heads, but detection as well. We'll have detection on the roadways where a bike is, the roadkeeper should know the bike is there. And we will provide the necessary time to go if that bike hits the intersection zone. So, and where the bike markings will also support where that biker needs to be. That's how we could set up any signal, regardless of location. Other than the actual, what we call the physical off-site mitigation measures, the opponent is similar to the other site that has just down the road. We'll be covering a lot of transportation demand management options, for more sustainability and vehicle reduction. Again, the vehicle reduction part of these is not included in our trip generation, so everything that we've shown you so far, we can restrict it to the US. And it's sometimes as simple as some of the things on here that sound really simple, but it does reduce the amount of traffic. So, we have onsite cafeteria providing, how many less people are going to be going out to lunch, and now taking up another vehicle trip on the road. Direct deposit for employees, another one, how many trips are no longer going to the bank every two Thursdays, whatever it is. Providing the health assistance, I, we are also just next to the back. How many of those drone trips are going to be shared now, people going to the MAC to be genetically working at CST? Which is, again, overall, less traffic on the roadway from the numbers we're actually showing in the report. Just because we are able to do other things on site. Providing connections to the actual trail network, where our employees can use the trail that's grown there. Bike reps that get people to bike where they can, and provide those bike facilities offsite to get them there.
Are showers provided in the building? I assume it's a lead building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, there's showers, thank you, I missed that one.
But again, you guys promoting biking.
Yeah, that's why I asked that.
How many more people would bike if they just had a place to shower after they bike to work? That's how I'm like, oh crap, I'm up here. And again, one of the last ones in here, the traffic monitoring program. So, this is actually, we've been doing this anyways, but we are required to do this part of the MEEPA process and Master T's process. For, we get the benefit of, we've been doing this with the phase one work with traffic signal anyways. But, a monitoring program that has us look at a bunch of these locations again after the fact, both after phase one and after phase two, to see where we are. And through the MEEPA process, we're bound to potentially do other off-site mitigation measures in coordination with MEEPA. If we hit thresholds that are 10% more than what we said they were going to be in the past. So, if we were wrong, people will make us come back if used on the road. We don't think that's going to happen, we think we're way over conservative on our numbers. But it's just something that we are providing as part of our package, just so we can check with the map and with the state that we are doing what we're serving. And that includes our adherence to also the TDM measures themselves, and where we are, how many people are we getting to carpool? How many people are we getting to use EV charging stations? That's more of a sustainability thing, that's more of a car reduction, but, but things like that, to make sure that we're on par with other places there.
On the traffic monitoring, is there a way that you'll be counting bikes and PEDs on that count?
Yes, on our traffic count, they count everything, bikes, PEDs. Most of them are done with like a camera system now.
Yeah, okay. So, you're going to scooters and everything else?
Cameras aren't good enough to make it to you a complete number of weeks, clearly, it's like shapes and objects, but they can tell PEDs, they can tell PDS. They can tell, they can tell the vehicle classification, it will know if it's a certain size truck compared to the one that might even be a foot shorter and a different federal class. They will know, so we get all that information out of those counts. And that helps us leave, even like, again, truck size, helps us design like the training radio, we want to expect on certain roadways, just from those kinds of things. So, it's very, very valuable, especially now that we're using more of a camera technology as opposed to that, or wireless use in the roadway. So, from here, there's a couple of open comments in Weston Sampson's letter, again, most of the comments, I believe, at this point are no actually needed beyond what we already have. After the first peer review, we submitted that separate similar document that talked about the transportation demand management matters and the off-site mitigation. But from here, kind of what's generally still open, although we believe we do have responses for that, although we already talked about through here. There was talk about the feasibility of the bike lanes on School Street that we are proposing. I think the original way the comment was written was not understand that there actually is, we are expecting to widen the roadway a little bit to make that happen. So, the roadway is right now just a little bit narrow, especially, which you get about 200, 300 feet beyond the ramps north. Just a little bit of widening, you can open up enough to get the buffer bike lane, and using the existing roadway width that's there. There was a question about, in a couple different locations, about why not sidewalks? And again, I think I spoke to this a little bit earlier, of our facility itself and what we would project for destination coverage of our facility. It's generally limited, being an R and E facility, and being sold from any other destination that we could possibly be going, other than maybe the farm stand. And even then, that's only on Atwater, it's not even on School Street at that point. So, from there, the bikes lanes seem more practical for our particular use. And from there, it also does again tie into a recent MassDOT improvement that's already there. So, it's something, we're not just putting bike lanes in the middle of nowhere, they are connecting to other bike lanes going towards the same town. There is a discussion about the signalization of School Street, again, we talked a little already a lot good about, about that. Through coordination with MassTOD and the MEEPA review, that's generally been accepted by MassTOD for this location. It's something that they, because of the way it's been structured, again, even if we do bring in phase two, if they are able to own incorporate that signal after the fact. Otherwise, the way it just will just never operate, if that was the case. And then there's discussion about the sidewalk connectivity, which might be more of, happy, if the question come up about it. But the sidewalk connectivity, we'll call site adjacent, so the actual driveway out to Atwater next to the MAC. And where we are, there to Beaver Dam. But from there, I think one of the things that maybe Matt will go to the bottom more is, I believe we are, to an extent, the sidewalk as it is out to Atwater. I know Matt might want to talk more about when he gets to the Beaver Dam part, about how that pathway is no longer necessarily used the same way. Or at all, in the updated version of the statistics. But from there, that generally, for views, what we're still kind of left open with, Weston Sampson, these will be slightly expanded upon. But these will generally be the responses that hang up in our response study to their second peer review. But with that, that's kind of the end release of the traffic overview. So, yeah, probably get the questions.
I'm here from Weston Sampson, but I do have a question about the interest, about the traffic onsite. And maybe Weston Sampson can speak to this about whether there's a conflict between pedestrians and vehicles. And then the other thing is, we were there today, and the vehicles leaving the MAC are in a hurry. And I assume that at the end of the day, the CST employees are also in a hurry. So, that, that intersection between, as you come from the MAC and come out the main entrance exit of cell signaling. Seems to me to be worth a discussion about whether there's a stop sign for both, or for one of those. And, and people do walk, we saw one walking today down that road, not just perhaps. And, and people do walk. We saw one walking today down that road, not just perhaps cell signaling employees won't walk. But there are people who walk down that road. So.
There is a sign on that road that says, please.
Please be careful. Lots of bike, like pedestrians.
I can speak to a little bit about that right now. I believe there will be a stop sign at the end of our driveway onto Atwater. That would only be natural. Although I think what you're getting at is, are you stopping Atwater as well? At, at the actual driveway, so it's almost like an always stop at that location. I don't know if that's what you were getting at. And I, I always.
Traffic planner, I just, I see that as a, without a stop sign for somebody, a.
Yeah. Our driveway would be under stop control. An always stop, sort of stopping Atwater at the same time. Most likely in our, yeah, this is me off the cuff, but most likely would not meet the federal warrants for a stop sign at that location. A federal warrant for a stop sign volume I would need to be 300 cars basically on Atwater for eight hours of the day. With 200 on the adjacent side street, which is, I'm gonna take a wild guess, not happening. Because there's not even 300 cars on School Street for a lot of parts of the day. So, in a sense of that, the only other real way you're gonna trip that law is for sight lines coming out of the driveway on Atwater, which I believe at that location is pretty clear. So it doesn't mean people aren't stopping, but it just means the certain rules similar to a signal that we have to meet to do always stops are, are high threshold. And that's to stop, stop signs from just going in random places where they're just gonna get bored. So we would really, my guess is at this point, Atwater itself would not warrant a stop sign. But again, our.
Need a stop sign at the end of Atwater?
Oh, Atwater, at our driveway.
Oh, at your driveway.
Where your, the conflict point's gonna.
It could be stop shal.
But again, our driveway onto Atwater.
I'm kidding.
Itself will have.
Stop shal, that's the front of.
Let me ask questions, Kay?
So that was a massive amount of information. I actually read this thing and I, I'm glad you're here. But there is, there is an action plan. It's gonna be for phase one, day one. What, what measures are you gonna do from the, the northbound exit from school, from, from 128 to School Street to Atwater? And on day two, which is phase two, what is the plan gonna be? Actually, if you would open up a plan and just show us what that might be.
Are you, are you talking onsite or are you?
No, no, I'm talking about what, you guys gotta open on day one, and when I'm gonna come off of, of, I'm going to work cell signaling, I'm gonna be at that exit. What? I'm now northbound exit. What am I gonna see when I get onto the intersection of school and the, and the, and the exit? Anything? Just a stop sign?
For phase one, day one, the conditions at each of the ramps will be exactly the same as they are today in terms of traffic control. Will you stop signs at the end of the ramps or yield it if you're on the champ, if you're on the right charge, some planes?
It's not warranted by all your criteria.
It may be warranted, but again, warranted doesn't mean do. It just means you can't do if it's not warranted. So in a sense, just general traffic operations for being master T locations, master T does not see after phase one. Each of those locations generally being a problem for, again, the short amount of time of the day, it's gonna be a problem. So what we'll see at day one for phase one, there'll be obviously improvements to Atwater, whether it's the resurfacing. New pivot markings will be into Atwater for its intersection of school, new stop sign there. Again, there's a stop sign now, but it's pretty gated out. And then any of the other onsite related improvements that are on the actual CST site. And then in addition to that, again, the buffered bike lanes from the ramps up to Atwater. That's phase one, day one.
I'm just gonna stop for a second. Kayle, you have a, your hand up.
Yes, would you please ask Sam to release his screen? You're on the size of a postage stamp.
Thanks, Kayle.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Now we're done.
All right, much better.
And then phase two, day one, obviously everything that's already happened that we just talked about phase one. But at that point, again, upon the agreement of mass UT, the traffic signal at the northbound ramps. With a, another full traffic study that happens before that, that's run through mass UT and the perfect process. Whether they want a warranted to do so, and if are warranted, do they even agree that they don't? Based on their. Okay, at this point, basically said that we were agreed that if they do, you probably need it. But to wait till that phase, because at this point, the traffic from the site just makes, makes much, much lower than what we're projecting. And they don't wanna put themselves in a position to maintain something that they don't actually have to do. At least at phase one.
All right, let's say something again. Sorry, I just wanna make sure I understand. So phase one, day one, you said it's all gonna look the same. But then I thought I heard you talk about extension of bike lanes.
Well, I said, look the same at the actual ramp intersection.
This is a ramp, okay. But you are day one.
And then going north from there.
Yeah.
The bike lanes extending now to Atwater.
Okay.
Improvements at Atwater and school, with the markings and signage. We'll be resurfacing at Atwater.
Mission, winding the street or recapturing some of the. Observe the suffering.
Both.
Both.
The roadway itself will just be a little bit wider, but a lot of the pavement that's already there, we, the width itself would reperish.
Restrengthen it to define the travel lane?
So let's, I'm gonna, we can continue to ask questions. Let's let Weston Sampson weigh in. That may clarify some things for us. Darren, you should be able to share.
Yeah, I just did it. I'm sorry. And we don't have a slide deck actually, because we have, just as kind of noted, we have fairly limited comments on the traffic study. And we'll be talking about fiscal impacts as well. I guess just to check in on this timing before we get started, do we have 15, 20 minutes?
This is important.
Great, okay. Just wanted to verify. So, good evening. I'm Darren Kirshen from Weston and Sampson. I'm a team leader in environmental engineering. I'm gonna introduce my colleague Doug Ossler as well. He'll be presenting on our traffic study findings. So first, I'm just gonna provide an overview of how we came to this peer review and the steps we've engaged with the applicant and the planning board. So our first hearing attendance was on March 11th, where the applicant provided a thorough overview of the project. We were then reviewed during our initial peer review. About 10 different bylaw areas for the site plan and special permit, including traffic and fiscal impacts. On April 12th, we issued our first initial peer review memo, which was issued to the planning board and the applicant. And then from there, we had follow-up on May 21st from the applicant. We got a response to comments. And then we've subsequently, on June 6th, issued a memo responding just again to traffic. This evening and fiscal impacts. So that's sort of an overview schedule wise of where we've been on the project. As the applicant indicated, two weeks ago's hearing on May 28th, as they've represented the project to the planning board. Most of this is a large redevelopment of this quarry. There's about 2000 feet of loose driveway that's planned internally with sidewalks and connections. There's surface parking lots. Again, the two phases here, everyone's familiar with. We did the site lock earlier today, so we won't go into detail what the actual project is specifically. But, and then it's very helpful that Sam's provided a very detailed, comprehensive study. Where the traffic is moving. So we initially had a January 2023 TUC traffic impact analysis. That was part of our initial review. And we listed this out in our memo from last week. Then we got follow-up items from the tra, the traffic portion of the applicant's design team. Which was a full traffic management component study and then a traffic impact analysis and parking study. And then revisions from our earlier files that we received. And those are the basis of the limited comments that we now have open. We plan just to highlight the open comments we have on traffic. And then we'll move into our fiscal impact study, which we had no action items, but we just wanted to cover that topic area as well. But we'll probably pause after traffic just to stay consistent topic wise. And then kind of come back to the fiscal impact as our last topic area. So from there, I'll just transfer it to Doug. Do you wanna, on the laptop, or do you wanna speak to?
Sure, it's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you for the introduction. My name is Doug Ossler, Weston Sampson, senior project engineer. And done many different studies similar to this, as well as reviewing them. I've been on both sides of the aisle there. Just to mention my experience in looking at traffic studies. I will mention, thank you, the traffic study was done in a fair manner. Analytical and procedures were common to the industry standard. So I, things were fairly normal there. And the questions, some of the original comments were, included some clarifications, asking some questions, which they provided. There are still, I believe, four open comments. Some of them are just to provide possibility for discussion, which Sam has already brought up. Regarding delays and how that goes down, as well as a couple of recommendations, as he mentioned about sidewalks. Probably proceed first to last on those. So the first comment was not necessarily an action item for the town, but this was responding to the potential plan to widen School Street where it is too narrow to add bike lanes, as well as to re-stripe what's there. After winding to add full bike lanes. It was just more noting, noting that there, where the bike lanes exist currently, the majority of that portion, there is a sidewalk on one side. Where it will be winding, there is currently no sidewalk. Not necessarily asking that we add a sidewalk. But just pointing out, if we're dedicating bike lanes, it could also be striped as just a more generic shoulder that would not necessarily legally preclude pedestrians versus bicyclists. It's a little bit of bureaucracy, but just noting that could be considered, if it goes ahead with buffer bike lanes. You know, it's a decision for NASTA at that point. But that was the purpose, reason behind that comment.
So would you rather wait and see it again?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, I'll try to. On the April 12th memo, you were talking about complete streets improvements and recommending that. Is this, are you on the same topic here or?
Yes, it's the same topic. We left the original comment as it was, and then I refined the comment as I received feedback. I previously, I was not aware the first go around that there was actually going to be winding of the road. And I used the term complete streets more as a generic, consider the context of the roadway. And more of a regional plan as it connects to X area. So it wasn't so specific, but it is talking about the same thing. So dedicating to bikes versus being a little more permissive in striping for bikes and pedestrians.
Thank you.
The second open comment was more of just noting the areas, as the bylaw had stated, that it should be discussed and considered the potential improvements, not necessarily requiring all of the improvements. But a discussion of the locations where the delay, average delay per stopped vehicle increases by 10 seconds from the background condition to the build condition, or the no build condition to the build condition was a terminology that was used. So the original comment just noted instances and locations. We don't have a specific action item, but we have that open. So that if there are questions about any specific intersection, those of you on the board are in charge of asking those questions and feeling what's appropriate, it could be a start to that discussion. If anything more is required, we talked about, but we do not have any specific recommendation for the board to require. The third open comment, as we have, deals with sidewalk connectivity. I will read the specific bylaw and just provide that background. It says, "All development and redevelopment shall provide for pedestrian and bicyclist connections on the property and allow for possible future connections with adjoining properties." Where deemed appropriate by the planning board or SPGA. So this comment was dealing with, internal to the site, there are sidewalks as appropriate connected to the garage, parking garage and surface garage, surface parking and to the buildings. So we had no issue with that, and that was a separate bylaw, but this is specifically saying, if Atwater, if somebody else or the town or somebody builds sidewalks, or if for some reason there's bike lanes added to that roadway. We want to have connections to that from the site, if appropriate. So in this case, Sam mentioned that the nearest house residence was approximately a mile away from the site. And noted that as a reason that it was not necessarily appropriate to require a sidewalk directly to Atwater, connecting that. That is for the board to deem appropriate. Our comment was to recommend or suggest placement of sidewalks on the connecting roadway. And note that there are two accesses to the location right there. It's more easily to see the main driveway on the south side. As well as there is another driveway, I think it was Beaver. And I do not believe that they are planning on touching the part that connects to Atwater at the moment. That would be the most direct connection to, if there is an existing or planned trailhead on the, to the northeast of the property. It would be a potential recommendation to add approximately 350 feet of sidewalk along that road within the property of the site. So that's Weston Sampson recommends consideration for that connection.
So right now, that ring road does not have a proposed sidewalk. Is that correct?
There's a sidewalk all around.
Oh, it has a sidewalk.
It has a driveway if he's doesn't connect to the west.
It's all the way around the site. The one place it's missing is between Atwater and the site itself. In that end of the sidewalk, which is right here, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I dropped the screen again, I'm sorry. But again, that's what we had brought up right at the end of my presentation, that this is something that we're gonna add in to tie it back to Atwater.
Okay.
It was the part about the Beaver Dam.
Okay.
That we were excluding at the moment is, this is no longer.
So the, so the outcome is additional sidewalk section from Atwater to the intersection of the ring road?
Correct. Yeah, there's currently no sidewalk there, and they're adding, the applicant will be adding sidewalk there.
And then the last open was also, it's a. And the fourth open comment that we have here today, a very minor one. While reviewing the site plan, there is one crosswalk with an internal to the site is fairly close to. There's the mini of the rain garden. There's a sidewalk that goes around the rain garden. And there is a crosswalk that connects that rain garden to, close to where the phase two building is. It's fairly close to an existing intersection, granted it is the Beaver Dam that will no longer be accessed. For clarification, I would like to ask whether that will be emergency access or like not used at all. I have you, may I change the comment? So I'm allowed to ask you a question.
So, I think currently, what's going on here? This is a bunch of infrastructure. We get some switchgear and stuff. Most of it's for phase two. We also have a pump station for, the sewer pump station to get off site. This is basically gonna be a gravel drive now. This area is, I'm sorry. This area is, it's very steep. It erodes out a lot. Anybody who was at the sidewalk today saw what was going on. And basically, as it, as it washes out, it dumps right into smutland. And so we're trying to not allow that. So this portion of it is basically gonna be returned to a natural state. So that's why there's no sidewalk being proposed in there. But this portion here, we can certainly tie it back in. It wasn't being proposed because of the, you know, the structure to tie it into an Atwater. And then there was, there's inner connectivity between the MAC and CST onsite as it stands.
Matt, the only traffic, the only traffic.
Now, the only traffic, the only traffic going up that spur that was Beaver Dam Road or, you know, no, up top, just being abandoned, would be to access the electrical structure.
Correct.
You know, as it relates to, as it relates to the proximity of the crosswalk, there'll be very little traffic.
Exactly.
And that little spurt.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. So with that response, as the connection to Beaver Dam is going to be returned to a more naturalistic state, there's not necessarily going to be an intersection there. The comment was to say, can you shift that crosswalk closer to the intersection? I don't know if it was like 10 feet or something like that, but if there's no intersection, then that comment is, is no longer proposed. So that's a general overview of the four open comments that we had. One was dealing with Maston potentially required widening and more just the striping of dedicated bike buffer versus a shoulder for bikes and pedestrians. The second one was just an overview of delay as it results with improvements overall that they are providing. And the third one was an extra bit of sidewalk, which they've indicated that they're planning on providing. Thank you for your time. Please, any questions?
So I don't know if this was to you or to me, but so you talk about bike lanes on School Street, but no bike lanes on Atwater. And so I'm wondering what traffic analysis has been done on Atwater for the cars, traffic, typing, and walking. It would make sense to me, and, but though I know Atwater isn't very wide, that you would continue the bike lane up to the site, not just having it on School Street. So I'm wondering why that isn't being discussed.
So right now, the width of Atwater in its classification, right now, Atwater is classified as a local roadway. And we generally, or, just, we generally wouldn't be adding bicycle lanes to the local roadway. But even if so, the roadway itself is not even widened up right now to generally support the, probably in fact should be there. So in addition to that, 10 more feet to add bike lanes. We're now actually, all of that is now inside the wetland. There, it's just, it's only really widened one way, Atwater. South side of the roadway wraps up pretty quickly with the ledge. So we'd be widening all that 10 feet into the wetland, which is something in the type of roadway that Atwater is. Generally, it's what we would expect for bicycle traffic. It might be a little different if we're talking about pedestrians. The bicycles are generally keeping with the traffic for a good amount of that time on Atwater. That didn't seem like there was any actual overall benefit compared to the wetland impact that comes with that. Because that wetland is the entire rest of Atwater that we have to deal with.
Can you explain what bicycle accommodations we are making on that?
Yeah, right, right now, we would be providing shared use bicycle lanes. So with the buffer bicycle lanes that we are providing, the widening of the roadway between the, on School Street from the ramps to Atwater. And then from Atwater on, we'd be providing shared use, even marking sharerows, we call them, for that entire length of Atwater. That doesn't necessarily require wiring, widening, marking on the roadway, any appropriate signs that has to go with those for shared the roadway. And that's how we do it with that. That avoids any of the impacts of the ledge on the north side. And again, like I said before, most likely, if it got flagged, wetlands on the other side of the roadway too for a lot of amount of the year, is wet in that area between the ledge and the actual roadway. You know, might not be considered to the general line.
That sharerow is, is the same as the existing condition on lower School Street right now. They have that lane with that signal on the roadway.
Sure, yeah. So it's that, it's that type of level. And then, some of that has to do with the fact that, again, Atwater itself is classified as a local roadway. It's the lowest of the classes for roadway, as opposed to School Street, which is a major arterial.
Yeah, that water doesn't even have a line down the middle, does it?
On that type of roadway, as opposed to that.
So there's no line on Atwater, down the middle?
There isn't now. I don't know if we're planning on putting one back.
Yeah, I thought I saw that.
We have it for the first couple hundred feet, because we knew we were going to die, but at that point.
What about traffic?
The center line doesn't really change the bike condition for that. It would be more like shoulder lines would, but.
So have you assessed, like, and maybe it's a different topic, but safety on Atwater for all of that going on? Or is that a different, like?
No, I mean, that is part of the traffic and what we would be looking at. And I think what we've tried to establish right now, the classification of what Atwater is is a local roadway. The amount of traffic that's on Atwater, even with our development, would not necessarily necessitate a separated bicycle facility. It doesn't mean we don't want to provide improvement. We're trying to provide the accommodation what we can, which is the sharerows. It is our understanding or our belief that a full bicycle facility, the widening of Atwater that would be involved is a, would probably end up being, let's say, 12 to 15 feet of widening to the north, to provide bike lanes in each direction. Plus the additional width of the lane. But again, Atwater is not even wide enough theoretically, if you were making it into look for lanes now in each direction. And all that impact is to the wetland. And that wetland is right after the roadway edge, probably.
Is there any chance of getting a pathway that is not along Atwater to the site from School Street?
Like for me?
Both, both sides of the, both sides of the School Street, or, sorry, Atwater, are owned by other entities. So the wetland is owned by trustees of reservation. You have two parcels before you get to the, the crossing for Sommelet Brook. Sommelet Brook is owned by trustees of reservation. So that width of roadway is pretty much set, unless the town wants to make it.
I guess I'm, it's an alternate.
Like up over the hill through the compost site?
Yeah, exactly.
So you can, I think you can currently cut up through Dr. Gurley's and then back down the other side and onto, and on, you, you get onto Atwater about halfway down.
But, but that being said, that is private property. That's not public right of way to do that, which, and we can't, certainly people aren't too private property, right?
It's also a hill.
So then you're talking about, one of the things you said earlier, if I heard you correctly, is that you're going to encourage cycling to work as well. So in the, in the two peak times, when all the cars that you showed will be moving down Atwater, I assume bikes will at the same time. So that's just a, I mean, there's going to be some safety considerations, I think. With sharerow, I'd never heard that term before. I get it, thanks Mark for pointing out that they exist already in town, but I've ridden my bike on that road and it's a little hairy. You know, I don't know, I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, we should think about how best to consider that.
Yeah, and we, what we've tried to do is try to extend that bike accommodation from its current determinance to the maximum extent possible, or feasible, which is Atwater. Because once you hit Atwater, it's a, it's a environmental issue. And I'm not even worried about permitting, I'm worried about, it's just all wet and shady. And I'm, I'm thinking, I don't read any comments or, you have to be careful, but I can take, well, I'll get there.
Sue, have a comment?
So this might be for a different part of the hearing. Terrific traffic study and the comments on the study, it all relates to once cell signaling is up and running. How do we deal with safety and traffic concerns during the construction process of all of the trucks and other equipment?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna fill in for Craig Keller, who is our project manager for Columbia Construction. Just wanted to follow. There are, for all intensive purposes, most of the trucks for the project are coming right off 128 down School Street and onto Atwater. So they're not into the general public flow of traffic going throughout the town. The hours of operation for construction activity, that you're going to comply with your local regulations. And then, basically, they have their own codes that they have to follow for hauling and heavy vehicle traffic. So once you get off of Atwater, you're onto the site, it's fully contained. The site currently is being fenced. We're going through a whole set of security issues. And they have their own, whoever's bringing stuff to their site has their own DOT criteria that they have to follow, and have their permits that have to be updated in the current. I'm sure I answered all of your questions, but there's.
Any thought about temporary mitigation on Atwater? There's people who are biking and walking and going to the MAC and back, you know, with the heavy truck traffic.
So when we, so there's going to be some utility work on Atwater. And during that time, it will be, there'll be flagged with code so that safety will be, and it's a narrow road, so we're gonna have to figure out how traffic goes. But that's basically part of Columbia's traffic protocols that they've been working through. I know that they're looking for some sort of. I don't have, I don't have any specific answers for you. I can tell you that Columbia is a very, a high-level contractor. It's not anything that they're going to take lightly. We do have neighbors on the road, so we are going to have to work with them. And we already have been talking to them to make sure that everybody's going to be accommodated in good status. They will be working through, you know, hours of operations. And they will have all schedules so that people know what's going on, what's going on.
And Craig Keller will be at a subsequent hearings, so he can give you more detail if you need it.
Great, thank you.
Well, I'm also concerned about the construction, you know, large truck volume, particularly coming on that north, from, coming northbound on 128, which I presume is where they'll mostly come from, but I don't know. And turning left onto School Street. And their hours are probably, for three years of construction or whatever, are probably more in conflict with the school hours than your employees. So they're coming seven, you know, 7:00 to 7:30. And that Essex traffic, coming, traffic coming from Essex at the 7:20 to 7:45 is heavy and stressed. And because it's the, it's people driving to the middle and high school. So 180 days a year, there's a significant traffic burden at southbound on School Street in those hours. So I think that's almost like your biggest pinch point in the whole Phase One, Phase Two, is that construction timeframe. And then going down, then, on the, my concern on Atwater during construction and then during operations is, I agree with you, the width of the road, and we walked that this afternoon, is wetlands bound, and there may be some places where we could get a little more width. But I, I tend to agree with you that, you know, the share of the road and markings would be a positive thing. But the other piece is speed. And we saw it this afternoon. I mean, people are going down that road at 40 miles an hour, at least. So two things is what can we do to make sure that your construction employees, who are going to be late to work in the morning, and construction, heavy construction equipment, slow down in particular. And then, once you're up and running, how do we get all users of Atwater to slow down? So what can we do that's creative, and I'll look to all of you to?
I would think that you've probably employed the same strategies that Manchester has effectively employed on other streets with those conditions, like School Street, where you come off 128 and you're immediately told how fast you're going. That kind of thing.
Enforcement, I mean, nothing like a few tickets to slow everybody down.
They gotta be on random days and random hours. You can't do it at the same time, you start to get.
I mean, enforcement and posting. I don't even know if that's a posted, that's posted.
Traffic calming on Atwater AB?
Right.
Physical traffic calming?
I mean, there's probably things that we, we can have a discussion on, that we're ready, prepared to offer anything to you right now. There's something that we can definitely discuss and figure out different measures. You don't really just want to come up with one thing off the top of your head anyways, because that's something you want to talk about, who's driving that roadway every day? I'm not saying this is the answer, I'm just saying I'm using that as the example, like, you can choose the example. It always comes out things like speed limits, for instance. They're great, and so you can drive over them. So, or, you get a little lucky.
Right, we have a lot of business, we have a lot of business traffic from the.
I would suggest that what we.
But, but that's what I'm saying, like, you don't want to say anything off the top of your head. There's something we can definitely have a discussion about.
I think we can come back.
Yeah, and we're not trying to be prescriptive with beat ups, but I do think.
It's just the example I always gave, it's the one that everyone knows.
Yeah, there's an acknowledgement that everyone's sharing this road, so this is sort of a, you know, complete street in the sense that everybody's mixed mode, right? Everybody, bikes, pets, scooters, wheelchairs, maybe walkers, cars, delivery trucks, all going to be in that same roadway, which is kind of a rural road. So, you know, how can you, it's kind of nice, the rural character of it, but it's going to see increased traffic. So how can we provide some traffic calming? What would that be through striping, signage, physical?
And again, there's definitely things we can, we can definitely discuss.
Physical, yeah.
I, I will say the widening of the roadway will be.
That'll make it go faster, yeah.
So I can say that. So, and that's just, it's just not, and you don't even know what you're doing. It's the little guy in the back there that's talking that if the road's wider, you feel safer and therefore you, that, that all that stress is there.
There's traffic markings at the sharerows.
Different things, or different markings on the roadway, even though you might not think that it was a couple miles an hour on.
You put fog lines on, for example?
That's something you could think about doing. The center line's a little more interesting when it comes to things like bike combination, because that's not where it's going to keep the bike in the road, because they're not going to be in center of the road being. Hopefully. But shoulder lines, definitely something more. One thing going back to, I think we brought it earlier, is when it comes to construction, is a lot of the work that we are doing on Atwater, utility work, so it's not going to be 1,000 feet at a time. It's going to be, you know, 100 feet at a time, because you can't lay head that much, like, all at once, right? So, so just something that, there won't be one lane of traffic for 1,000 feet. It's going to be every single day, it'll just keep. So it's obviously.
So you know at this point what the timing of that utility work will be, how long that will take?
If you remember our, my first presentation, we stepped through the different phases that were going to be going on. Right now, is, well, the first thing that they're in and doing is a lot of site prep, site work. I believe mostly utility work is going to kick in the end of this year. And then, there's offsite stuff that's going on right now. But when the interconnectivity utilities probably ends this year, and then we go into buildings. I can, at my next presentation, I can bring it up, we can go over it.
Did you specifically state that the, the approximate, like, month, year? Is it where there will be continuous utility work on that road?
So it's, I can't specify if it's going to be continuous utility. It depends upon a bunch of different factors, which you will know, you will hear. At my next, at the similar presentation, I can, I can dive into the angle.
Utility work will slow people down.
Yeah. It will come to a crawl.
Just another question about Atwater AB in terms of its permanent state after you've, after you've done the utility work, you've had to repave or rebuild the culvert. If you're thinking about pedestrian and bike circulation and stormwater management, right now, I think everything just sheets off into the wetlands. We're adding more traffic, which creates more particulates and will increase, you know, the potential for water pollution. Is there a, is there a scenario where you're looking at something like vertical curbs on both sides of the road to kind of do double duty to manage stormwater capture so that you're not sheeting off pollutants into the wetlands and using that as a kind of a traffic calming strategy too? Because it's got a, you know, it's got a sense of narrowing the road, even if it keeps the same, effectively the same distance. Just wondering if you could sort of put two hats on and think about stormwater management and vehicular calming at the same time?
So at this point in time, paving is really dealing with the proposed on Atwater. There's no utility, there's no stormwater utility improvements being proposed. And there's no curving that's being proposed. It's pretty much, what's theirs, we're going to keep as it is.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that we're, we are, I guess you may not be being triggered if you're not doing any improvements in Atwater. I thought you were doing utility work down Atwater, so if there is. So if there is, I mean, if we're adding more traffic with X number of employees, that just creates more particulates to wash into the wetlands. And so I'm just, I guess I'm just asking the question about the overall stormwater management strategy and whether you've thought about controlling pollution off of Atwater. And if that could be part of the traffic calming strategy, perhaps? Just throw some ideas out there.
Yeah, I, I would, so we've been in touch with, I mean, we've talked with Chuck and Nate on a very regular basis.
Yeah.
This would be in their purview. They would also have to maintain this after we update it.
Right.
So that would be a direct discussion with them.
Yeah.
As, as of today, it's been repaved and keep as it is.
So the other, um, comment is, uh, we have had somebody from the Bike and Pedestrian Committee on, attend some of these meetings. And if they're not on today, perhaps we can, uh, Mark, seek their direct input on this, on this issue? Make sure that they have weighed in on it, or, um. Oh, he just.
He was here earlier.
Oh, sorry. Well, we'll follow up, okay. Um, so at this point, other, other comments from the board? Don't forget, we will have, um, additional time. Mark.
Okay.
Two questions. One is, um, at the meeting, uh, out on the site, you talked about that back entrance.
Might be him.
Yes. You talked about the back entrance where the parking lot to get to the trustees thing, uh, is. And that, that entrance would be open that runs through the Beaver Dam Road and through the storage site. So is that gonna be an access that's open all the time to, uh, access the site here?
So there's, there's two phases to this. One is there's an easement that's being, I'm not gonna speak without Mark in.
That's an easement that already exists.
Oh, okay.
All right. There, there's an easement, uh, for the benefit of, of the cell signaling property over the Brady property. And, and so that will be available. So.
So, but the driveway connection will be open all the time?
Yes.
I mean, it's not gonna be gated, it's not gonna be for emergency access. I know you have the right to prop, to property.
So, it's there for a, it's there for a, this, this back one is here for two reasons. One is fire access, we have a secondary. Um, and then it's also provided more direct connection for the, um, the site. It's not paved on purpose to be a secondary, uh, piece of it. But we're not looking to close it, it's, it's part of the overall plan.
We, we did, uh, modify the easement with Tim Brady so that we could improve the slope and the conditions going in. So it's going to be widened. And it was a place where the grade exceeded ten percent.
Right.
And that's being taken down.
But it will be available for use by employees or anybody?
Probably, it would be available, but it won't be primary access.
Okay, all right.
And, I mean, is there, what are you, what are you trying to look for?
I just wanted to kind of clarify that and see whether, I mean, just how much use that may or may not get, so. Um, and then, uh, you mentioned about the connection to the MAC. Talked about traffic, possible traffic calming, Beaver Dam Road access. Oh, so you talked about, well, shared use of Atwater app for cars and bikes and anything else. Uh, but what is the specific, uh, like, peak and, um, midday, like, non-peak, but business hour kind of traffic on, um, Atwater app?
Are you asking me, or are you asking?
I'm just asking.
He's back there, I'm trying to look it up really quick. But I, I, I was just curious, because, you know, a shared road with cars is fine. Again, it depends on speed and the number of vehicles and et cetera. So, um, I was just kind of curious.
So, the today number?
Mm-hmm.
Yesterday, basically.
Yep.
I'll do the worst hour of the day, it's the PM, uh, peak hour. And that's about eighty cars going eastbound and, uh, seventy-five going westbound. So.
More than one of them.
Not much realistically. Um, for a road vehicle, going for that type of roadway, that type of roadway probably should be able to handle to, at capacity, uh, on the free flow parts, to say like five hundred, six hundred, I think. We're gonna add, what did we say about, all of our traffic capacities at one. So we're talking about two fifty, uh, in one direction, based on, ninety percent of two fifty. So, uh, a little over two hundred, uh, in one direction, getting the AM. The same amount, basically, the other direction in the PM, and the other twenty-five or thirty or so, in the opposite. So, I forgot, so we're still, we'll be under capacity. But again, we did talk about, yes, we're, the roadway is not actually as wide as it is potentially. Uh, there will be an extract for bikes and vehicles. And just naturally, the roadway itself is, feels smaller because of the tree comp. So it feels like it runs into a canopy as you drive down, especially for these ones. Some, which itself, luckily, actually is a traffic comp. Uh, but that's what we, like, so we, we do agree that we're gonna be increasing traffic, um, a good amount on the roadway. Uh, we're not quite at capacity yet, uh, but that does, you know, just we're gonna keep it much better than we're used to today. That's all.
I have one other question, and then this may be for the traffic expert. That we're, we're thinking about, um, all these issues with dry, with, uh, not, you know, not winter conditions. How, you know, in a, in the peak winter storm, or, you know, uh, what storm conditions, the road narrows with side, with both onsite and Atwater with snowbanks. Are there additional things we should be thinking about for winter that are customary or unique to the site?
Uh, we can, yeah, we can contribute too. I mean, I know the culvert, you just have like a higher freezing. It's gonna be exposed to the air falling underneath the new culvert. So it's pretty similar to bridge conditions.
Funny you speak up a little bit, so Gail can hear you.
Sorry, I was just noting that, like, during the site walk today, we were walking over the culvert, um, on Atwater app that's gonna be replaced, so that is almost serving as a small bridge. Uh, so it's an exposed, um, piece of asphalt that's gonna freeze before the other areas. Um, so the proper pretreatment and plowing is necessary. So sometimes there might be signage.
Are there any no-salt areas, given the proximity to, um, Atwater, to, um, Somelbrook?
It's a public street, so it would be up to the town, I would think.
How about on your site?
For salt?
Yeah, I mean, or should we be thinking about restricting salt use?
I guess all of these are existing conditions, so they'll be good site history for, um, obviously, there's not a manufacturing or pharmaceutical company. Uh, it's a quarry, so the road traffic's gonna change significantly. But there will be some historical information that this applicant has, um, from winter conditions. Um, we do look, I guess, for the sites, we'll, we'll be looking at like the snowplow and.
Okay.
Where there's stockpiling snow, uh, to make sure that those are not blocking fire access and safety issues. Um, but I think you're getting into the more general.
I guess I'm asking, is there, are there any restrictions around snow removal or street treatment that we should consider, um, given the surrounding environment? Or, or not?
There might be in our current bylaw for stormwater, storm.
Or stormwater is one thing, but the, I'm thinking of salt. Uh, or are there any steep areas that, you know, under icy conditions would be problematic? Or, the answer might be no.
Sure, no, there's certainly steep grades. So I think that may be covered more in the civil discussion. Let me talk about grading, how geographic changes is a topic of two weeks' depth. We can flag that, revisit. I don't know if, something about any comments on winter conditions in your studies? Or suggested litigation for?
I guess the question is, does your methodology also take into effect, take into account winter?
Like, in terms of just, in a general traffic sense, I mean, we're not gonna see much difference between winter and summer. If you're talking about that.
Maybe fewer bikes.
Uh, it's, it's a, it's a site, so it's a known site. It's not like it's schools off, it's schools on. For our site, we're there regardless of what time of year it is. So, we, on a snow day, probably less people wanna go into work, probably. So, it's, it's kind of like that situation. Um, in terms of the actual salt, or, you know, solid, what's actually happening on Atwater, I think, I mean, it's kind of over my particular purview of traffic, but, uh, think of public roadway, it's kind of, again, it's kind of a different tab on what they particularly would be doing. Answering part of your other question, which I was focusing on, the rest of the day, it's, Atwater's actually pretty constant. Because, again, now, obviously, people change that to peak hours. We don't have much limited traffic during the rest of the day. But Atwater generally is that a hundred car total, somewhere around there, but the entire day throughout.
Okay. We do wanna talk about fiscal impact, but let me just see if there are any comments on traffic, um, from, I guess, uh, would be online. Can you just stop sharing for a second, so I can see? Uh, anybody online have, uh, any comment on, on the traffic? No, I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm gonna jump to, back to Darren on, uh, some comments on the fiscal analysis.
Sure, and I don't necessarily need to present these up again, but I guess, so the other standard that we looked at was the fiscal analysis standard in the bylaw. Um, so this is based on the initial applicant's, or the applicant's initial filing. So we looked at the fiscal impact of the project, trying to verify this is gonna have a positive impact on the town, based on revenue estimates, and then also accounting for the municipal service costs of the additional development. Um, so looking at the capacity of the same municipal facilities, uh, we had found that their, I guess, their overall fiscal impact is gonna be net positive. The applicant had done a study and found that they were gonna be generating just five hundred, sixty thousand dollars of, um, additional, I guess, economic activity in the, in the subject area. Um, the second item we look at is the cost of town of the additional services that the city's paid for. But the cost would be thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, based on services that that town, or the applicant, is looking to use during our site walk today. We, for example, looked at the water, which will be extended up from Route 128 north into the property. Uh, and then the last item was just the gross revenue per year, um, which is also similarly in that five hundred ninety-seven thousand dollar range. And we had no comments on, um, the methodology the applicant came up with. There is gonna be a, obviously, with substantial creation of, um, large office and research facility, substantial economic benefit to the town. We didn't have any specific comments and no follow-up for the applicant on those items.
Okay. Can you make sure your, your memo on that gets to the finance committee too?
That's it, uh, can you?
Um, any comments or questions from the board on that?
I just have a quick question on the, um, you did the analysis for, um, what the anticipated tax revenue would be. You didn't back out what the town currently gets for that site?
Didn't back out what?
What the town currently gets for that site? So, just trying to get what the actual increase in property tax, I mean, I think it's probably only fifty-one thousand.
That, that, that was specified in the, uh, impact study. It did talk about the assessed value currently in the current tax base, which is, uh, not significant, but it's in here somewhere.
I mean, just doing a rough calculation myself, it's probably about fifty-one thousand. So I just, I was just curious why, you know, if it's saying this is the profit generated that.
The, the existing quarry property is assessed at four million and five and generates forty-seven thousand in property tax revenue. The estimated property tax after construction will be one thousand four hundred and forty-four percent increase over existing revenues, is what was in the report.
So, but my question is to, um, to the gentleman speaking, that, um, I guess there, I was looking at it, that this was an analysis of what the increase in tax revenue for the town was. And so, in usual course, you would say, this is the, you know, what's calculated out, what we currently get. Uh, you took out thirty-five thousand for, um, what would be anticipated cost to the town. So I just was wondering why the forty-seven thousand rather than fifty thousand was backed up.
Yeah, no, I think, um, what we were looking at in the bylaw was just the total future real estate tax, not the, the increase or the, the change from current.
Not the net, okay.
Not the net. Um, so that's all we have listed, but, um, revisit that, that study.
No, that's fine, I just.
But there is gonna be, yeah, we were just looking at the total, um, from the study that was provided, so.
Any other comments? Uh, any comments from the public, um, about the, um, Weston Sampson's comments about the fiscal analysis? I see Sarah on, but Sarah will get through those comments. I know your committee is also looking at this. Okay, hearing nothing. Um, I think we will now continue the public hearing until, um, our next meeting, June twenty-fourth. And cell signaling will tell us what topic we're going to do then. But I think we would like to try to do stormwater next meeting, if we can, right? Because Laura's gonna.
We're doing both stormwater and landscape.
And landscape, if we can.
The program is all the civil and the landscape, none of the light.
None of the lighting.
On the, on the next, on the twenty-fourth, great. Okay, so.
I will be too.
Okay, so, um.
Do we have a schedule, uh, is it, are we meeting every two weeks now? So, just so that we can plan on.
Yeah, yeah, so the next meetings currently are July, June twenty-fourth, July eighth, and July twenty-second. There, that's the current schedule.
And then August, August nineteenth.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to August yet. Um, like, to try to do just one meeting in August, that's been our tradition, but we'll see. Um, and I know, I, we have a little bit of attendance issue on one of those July dates, so we'll have to, we may have to adjust. But, um, okay, so I'll take a motion to continue the public hearing till June twenty-fourth at, uh, let's see. Gail, should we, and Mark, um, we have other public hearings that night at six-thirty. So I'm thinking we should put cell signaling at seven-thirty. We always take our other business in the middle. So. Those other hearings are scheduled for six-thirty.
You'll get through those three items? In an hour?
I think we'll need an hour.
You think you'll get through them in an hour? As opposed to?
An hour and a half.
And then, or continuing this to a different night? Because those are, I believe those are, are. Those are already advertised.
Yeah, those are already advertised for six-thirty. Let's, um, let's continue to seven-thirty, and we may have to, um, we're not gonna complete those hearings that night. We're gonna have to continue them as well.
Okay.
We'll take it as a package. Well, we may, um, so let's continue to seven-thirty. Seven forty-five, would that be better?
That's a normal start.
No, don't do it, don't do it.
No, we're gonna start six, yeah, because we have a lot to cover with cell signaling. So let's, we have to manage the other ones, we'll, we'll do that. So seven-thirty, continue the public hearing to seven-thirty on June twenty-fourth. Um, and, um, so I have a motion, do I have a fact?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you on the twenty-fourth, sorry, thank you for coming at five and sticking around. Okay, um. Yeah. Stocks and. Yeah. Okay, so what do you want to do? Thank you, we can have the chairs. Um, so. So it is late, but we, I'm hoping we can get through the liaisons. For, in your packet are, the most effective way to do this. There's a list of liaisons. I guess I can bring it up and share it.
Is this the night packet that you're talking about?
Yeah, no, but that's not the packet I'm talking about. I'm talking about the packet for tonight. So before you open up your big giant box, there's this present there. We have typically, and maybe Gail may have updated the contacts, I was using an old list. We have typically had a liaison to a number of boards, and so that does not mean you have to attend every board meeting. It means that you, you know, if whoever's the liaison to the bike and pedestrian committee would call them up or email them and say, hey, now's the time to give us comments on the bike and pedestrian work at cell signaling. Or we have another special permit, you know, kind of keeping them, being the place that they might, you know, touch base on them. There is one group that I know Ron just summarily did go to all of the.
CPC.
CPC meetings. And I'm not sure we have to go to all of them, but there is a training coming up that Jack Burke had asked that whoever is the liaison go to, and I can provide that information. The, like, the CBA, who's been doing that, she, I think you don't go to all meetings, do you?
I wish I could, but.
Right, because they're helpful, but you review, like, you also review the minutes of the meetings of the, the group that you're liaising with. I think it's unrealistic to ask to go to every meeting, so. So I guess I'll start with.
Are there existing assignments for these?
There were, but I deleted them all because there's so many changes with the board, so. I'm trying to think of a good process to do that. To do this.
Are you looking for volunteers?
I'm looking for volunteers. Maybe tonight what we could do is people who are particularly interested in one of these groups.
So it looks like you have to, all of us will be on multiple.
Yes.
Correct. And we may not, let's start by saying, are there any of these that we don't really need a liaison? I'm not sure, do we need a liaison for council on aging?
Probably not.
Probably not. All right, let's leave that.
Probably not assessing, right?
Me?
Assessing? I don't think we've ever.
No, okay. I took Ron's old list. Health, probably not. I think Mark can, I mean, our planning office can also be the liaison for a lot of these.
Yeah, I mean, if there's something that needs coordination.
Right.
I mean, I do attend many of these, well, several, not many, several. I do attend several of these other committee meetings.
Okay. So which ones do you attend? Let's, let's put that on there. Open space, Parks and Rec.
Conservation.
You attend all the concomities?
Well, not all, but ones that don't conflict was something else.
Okay, good.
I got, I attended, I attend all the CBA. I'll get to the planning board. Housing trust. I attended some stream team. I try and attend all the CPC ones.
I can see CPC here.
Just to go to. Contamination is forty-six, forty-two.
So forty, uh, thirty-four is community preservation.
Which you do at Mark, right?
Oh, thanks. I do think this one needs somebody.
Mark said he goes to.
Well, you can still have, you can still have over eight on.
I think we still need somebody on that one, at least.
So how often do these committees meet? Is it, is it consistent across the board?
Varies, it varies.
Usually once a month.
I mean, I'm doing the, I'm doing the harbor planning committee, so I think I'll.
I'll stick with vitamins.
Okay.
So.
Unless somebody else wants to.
So the affordable housing trust, that's you. Yeah, it's me, but it's a formal.
Right, but that's okay. You can then report out.
Sure, yeah.
Anybody want to do bike and pedestrian? That is important.
I'll do that.
And Gordon's on the dip, so.
So let's talk about that, Chris. We, are we gonna switch you out and me in, even though I'm on it anyway?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just different role?
Yeah, you just, all you're doing is, is when there's something that has planning board interest, you report it out.
So I'm going to it every month anyway.
Yeah, so you're it.
I hear Chris on it all the time. So can I be actively involved on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, then I'll, I'll stay where I am and you're free.
Go do something else.
You're done.
Because he's got nothing.
Steve just wrote me about that today, you know, I told him, I said, you suggested it, that's a good suggestion. I'd be happy to do it.
I'll stick with the CBA.
Okay.
Because it's helping me a lot.
Yeah. Um, I think Laura was doing sustainability. Kind of put her on that. Parks and Rec, we can probably let Mark do that. And open space is.
I do that as well.
This is so hard.
Yes, I spend three.
One short task.
That's why I can't go to all, because there's often conflicts for the same, so I have to pick and choose, so. Well, I also sometimes do this.
Do you sometimes do historic?
I sometimes do that too.
So self-signaling has already been in for them, concom?
Yes, we have, uh, I just saw that in my pile today.
I just was wondering if they would move back around.
What did you say?
The concom condition, yeah.
Order of conditions, yes. Council on Aging, I don't think we need. Cultural council.
Are we still a public meeting right now?
Yep.
Yes.
ADA committee. I'm gonna suggest that Laura do that. I don't think the school committee, I've been on the school committee person forever and it's not bad. Laura, do you want to just be the liaison with the ADA committee? Or not? I put you on as sustainability.
I have a bandwidth issue.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, and that's Chris. Okay. I think that almost covers most of them. I'll do select work.
Ivory White be an interesting one since they're trying to do expansion.
Do you want to just be the person in touch base?
Thank you, Mary.
Be careful what you.
I don't think you said anything yet, but I think. I've been doing check dams, so I'll continue now. All right, that almost fills everything up.
The CPC is a one.
CPC.
Right.
I don't want to keep that on until MBTA is over.
Right.
If I'm giving you a dip, I can do CPC.
He needs a third name.
Well, don't forget. Coastal Stream Team, I happen to. Okay, I think that pretty much fills it in. We can always move things around. North Shore Task Force rep, that is, is that the?
I do that too. That's MAPC.
Well, I'm the, I think I'm the official person, but I don't know because it's all about cities, so.
Yeah, it's a lot, a lot of it's not particularly relevant.
They did the training on.
I get the.
MBTA, that was not bad.
Right, I think part of it, so another thing you do is you get, you subscribe to their, go on the website and subscribe to the notices for any of these meetings. You can subscribe to different things. And then you can just, when you get the email, you look and see if there's any agenda items that are relevant to the planning board. You don't even have to go to the meeting. You can then call chair or listen to the meeting afterwards, or review the minutes and say, the Coastal Stream Team is concerned about Somelbrook, which is related to self-signaling, so, you know, that's, for example, I put myself as Coastal Stream Team, I'll connect with them and just say that, that you might wanna, we're gonna talk about stormwater at the next meeting, you might want to attend. So that kind of thing, just a face and a liaison. Okay, great.
So can I make a motion that we approve the assignments?
I don't think we even need a motion, but sure.
I think we do.
Be happy to. Okay, great.
So we made the motion.
Gail, I'll send this to you, so you don't have to try to read it online. Oh, Jack, okay, we have a motion. I have a, Jack, is that Jack Burke?
Yes, yes, sir, may I?
Yes, of course.
Hi, everybody. Jack Burke, CPC. The CPC position is a statutory position. It's required by the state. And the member of the planning board must be a sitting member and voting member of the, of the CPC. So other, your other positions are liaisons, the CPC is an actual voting member, must be appointed by the selectmen after your nomination.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
So we.
We meet, we meet once a month generally, sometimes twice in the winter, not in the summer. We have one meeting in July at the Chowder House, very mortgage social. But we'll start meeting again in September. We meet on Thursdays at five-thirty via Zoom.
So Jack, did you say the select board makes the appointment?
You, all the select board does is affirm based on your nomination.
I need to have a good shot, Chris.
Well, that's what I was afraid of.
Okay, well, you can always amend your motion next meeting. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the slate as presented? All right, great. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Sarah.
We laugh, but these are important and it's, it's good to, to remember that. So I'll post this in next meeting's packet, so you can all make a note of which ones. And we'll get the correct, when I post it, we'll have the correct contacts, because this is an old list. So, and I did hide a bunch of them. Great. We have minutes of May twenty-third and May twenty-eighth. A motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-third and May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Got a motion to approve? No, actually you can't, oh, because you weren't. Yeah, you were. Twenty-first, you were here.
We're not abstaining. I didn't get a chance to read them.
Neither and I can vote?
Yeah, you were here on the twenty-third. You were voted on the twenty-first and the, the twenty-third, you can't vote. Because you were. Everybody else, does it, have people read them or not?
They're written.
Okay.
Yes, they did.
Okay, so, so you'll move to approve them. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
And you'll second. Okay, any discussion? So I have to take them separately because Gordon will abstain on the twenty-third. All in favor of approving the minutes of the twenty-third? And Laura is, and Gordon are abstaining. The twenty-eighth, all in favor. And Laura, we have six to one abstention. Thank you, Gail, for the timely minutes. It's very helpful. Any other matters? Any public comment on other matters or matters for tonight? Great, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, what's that? What is this?
That's the packet for next time.
That's the packet for next time. Wow.
So we should read these to people.
Memorize them.
Like tomorrow.
So I have a motion.
So I move to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.